Good evening and welcome to the Lawrence City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 20th, 2018. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor Reyes. Counselor Levy. Counselor LaPlante.
Present.
Counselor Abdou.
Present.
Counselor Payano.
Present.
Counselor Dela Cruz. Counselor DePena.
Present.
Counselor Vice President Rodriguez.
Present.
And Counselor President Vasquez.
Present. Now, please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counselors, can I please get a motion to approve the minutes from March 6th, 2018? Motion has been made. It's been properly seconded in the discussion. Seeing there is none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Counselor Payano.
I know we have several public hearings. There is a motion that the Public Safety Committee is presenting today, a year-end safety police report. The Chief Vasquez is not able to stay for a long time, so I'm wondering, he has a family emergency as he attend to, if we could hear him first.
Okay. Is there a motion on the floor to take it out of order?
So, I'd like to present a motion and take this out of order and for us to hear this first.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Chief Vasquez, good evening.
Thank you, Counselors. I appreciate you taking me out of order and I apologize to the individuals here that are normally up before me. As Counselor Payano pointed out, we put together for the Public Safety Committee a Lawrence Police Department 2017 annual report, and I presented that report to the Public Safety Subcommittee and subsequently was asked to present the report here in front of you. Basically, it's a synopsis of the 2017 statistical information from the Lawrence Police Department, along with a, not just your Part I crimes, but along with a number of other goals, a breakdown of the department, a number of other statistics, which I felt were important to give not only the, not only you, the counselor, counselors, what an idea of or understanding what the department is doing in terms of workload, but also the community itself. So, there are a number of items in here, which include the Hackney Division license, sexual offenders, firearm, gun permits that are processed. There's a grant summary in here, listing the, what the department is doing with their grants in terms of servicing the youth of Lawrence, and as I stated, along with a number of other categories in here relative to Part I crimes. In order to get a sense of where the department is right now, where the department was compared to last year, we talked about overall, that the department was down 7% overall in crime, but this summary really gets, gives you an idea when you go through it over the weeks and months and over the year, an understanding of the different types of Part I crimes that we've investigated, and where we stand in those categories compared to other, to ourselves. And then there are some facts in here related to a couple of other cities and towns like Lawrence, population-wise, so you can get an indication of where we stand with other communities in the Commonwealth. There's some reports in here from the school department, a report in here from the Special Operations Division, referencing to all the different things that they do over the course of the year that you may not think of in the normal course of Lawrence Police Department business. It is important to note, a lot of these statistics, such as the 911 calls for service, how drastically the number, how high the number is in Lawrence compared to other municipalities. Again, just to give you a working idea of what the department is up against compared to other cities and towns, I think it's important to note that we've, that we're answering a lot of calls and also trying to service the community in other ways. So, I think it's pretty comprehensive. I think it'd be, it's a working model. It'll also serve to help me put together the various quarterly reports that you're looking for, in terms of where the department is number-wise, Part I crime-wise, you can get an understanding of that. And then it's also something that we can build on in terms of, if there's other information here that the residents and/or the council would like to see in the future, there's certainly room for modification in that regard as well. I don't believe that we've done this report, to my knowledge, ever in the police department. So, again, it's a working model. I think a lot of hours went into putting it together, and again, I think we're pretty happy with it, and I think it gives a pretty good indication of where the department is in a number of different areas. You happen to take any sort of questions you may have relative to the report? I understand that it's pretty comprehensive and there's a lot of information here, and this certainly is not the first or the last time that we'll talk about it, but if there's a question regarding the report, I'd be happy to try to answer that for you.
Okay, Counselors, in order to be able to engage in a discussion, we first need to have a motion on the floor. Is there a motion to approve document?
Motion to accept the report.
Point thirty-one, that's a committee report. Counselor LaPlante. Motion has been made and properly seconded. Counselor LaPlante, Counselor Payano.
I don't have a question. We spent plenty of time on the Public Safety Committee and asking questions, so I feel pretty good about it. I just want to take this opportunity through you, Mr. President, to thank you, the police department, and the rest of the folks who were part of making this document a reality. Tremendous, really helpful. This is the best product, information-wise, that I've seen ever come out of the police department since I've been on the city council, and it's easy to read, easy to understand, and it gives context. I can't ask for anything more. And I do appreciate, through you, Mr. President, the work that was put to make this document available to us. Thank you.
Counselor Payano.
Thank you, Mr. President. No, I just, no questions. I sort of want to make a similar statement. I want to thank Chief Vasquez and the members of the police department that took their time to create this report. I remember, you know, a few months ago, when I first spoke to, you know, the mayor about this, and I spoke to you as well, you know, I wasn't sure exactly what the product would look like, and I think it's, at the end, it went over, you know, my expectations. I think that the reasons that reports like this are important, not just within the police department, but other departments as well, is that it creates a sort of level of transparency and a level of accountability with what's going on. It also allows, you know, departments to strategize using data on how they can improve their practice. I think that there, within the Public Safety Committee, is going to be a lot of, sort of, you know, every month we're meeting, and we're probably going to have, you know, certain questions about certain things, but I would ask all of my colleagues to take a look and to read through this report. They spent a lot of time doing that, and it's available also online. So, again, thank you, Chief, for all, you know, all your great work.
Thank you. And I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to the Public Safety Committee for the push, and also for the suggestions and what kind of material that you were looking for. So, that certainly was very helpful.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Chief, thank you so much. Thank you for doing this. Thank you, Chief, for putting this report together. I remember a year ago, when myself and Counsel President put this item on the agenda and actually discussed this, the possibility of having a report a year ago, in terms of focusing on what the community wanted to see in terms of data. With that said, when we started the discussion at the Safety Committee, you present to us what usually, how it used to be done, piece of paper, few statistics, and another comparison to other community or perhaps our own data. Thank you for putting this together. This is an amazing report. I like it. I would like to see this growing, because we have a lot more to report, but this is going to serve the police department, as well as the community, together with the city council. This is going to serve as an skeleton to continue growing and continue providing more information as assured. And I'm very glad with the information that you provide to us, and I'm happy about it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Counselor Dela Cruz.
Hi, Chief. Thank you for coming. Something that is not in your data is that you have a crew that participates at the neighborhood meetings. Every month, you go to different communities, and people are getting hands-on information about whatever is going on. I hear a lot of good reference of having a policeman visiting the neighborhood associations, in which they can have access to you so easy. Then, like, three people came to me and they say, "Wow, I never been in a place where I can see the chief of police talking to us," and all of that. Then, that's something that should be in your data too, because I love it.
No, I think you're right. I think that it's invaluable, the work that the community groups do, and we've been working with them for years and years in the department, and you're right, what they bring to the table as well for the residents is invaluable, for sure.
Thank you.
Counselors, any further questions or comments?
I have another comment.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Chief, I would like to see in this report for next year, the amount of police that we have, per, the ratio between police and population. That should be there, and the way the community sees how many cops we are, we have currently in the population that the department is serving, that way we hope the community understands more about the work you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. Thank you for the opportunity, you know, for, for the report that you have presented. I cannot say any more words than have been already said here. So, I appreciate your efforts, and I know that this is going to be a great tool for all of us here in the city. Counselors, is there any comments or questions? Seeing there's none, is there a motion to withdraw?
No, motion to send it to the, to the Safety Committee, if possible, and that way we can work with it on a yearly basis.
We've had it at the Safety, Public Safety Committee before. So, every, every year, we will get a new report. So, this one, it's already established, so similar to the city audits that we have on a yearly basis.
Do we have to have it at the, at the Safety every year, like, as a new item?
Yeah. So, we will have, very similarly to the way we do audits, it will, it will be placed in the agenda once and again.
Just want to make sure that we have it.
Yeah.
That way we can keep them discussing.
Is there a motion to be withdrawn?
Motion to withdraw.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on, we have...
If I, just real quick, I apologize. I know that you're taking up another item later on regarding the land across the street from the police department.
Yes.
And I would just like to give a quick statement as to, we're totally in support of that. If that could be possible, we could use the additional parking and/or potential for a future spot for the police department. So, I just would like to get my two cents in on, on that. I know you're going to be taking it up later on, but I just wanted to make sure that you, you heard from the police department that that lot is very invaluable to us in terms of right now parking, and hopefully in the future, maybe even a police department. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Counselors, moving on, we have public participation. To everyone who will be speaking tonight, please note that you will have two and a half minutes to speak. When you hear the first bell, that means that you have spoken for two minutes. When you hear the second bell, that means that you've spoken for two and a half minutes, and your time is up. Please address the city council as a whole, and not any individual Counselors. State your name and address for the record, please. First person is Mr. H. Malley.
H. Malley, 53, Chester Street. Good evening, honorable members. Read the citizen demand of you and Mayor Rivera, support our police officers and senior officers union. Our police department, under impeccable leadership of Honorable Chief Roy Vasquez, has done excellent job to, to create safety for our citizen. But Mayor Rivera need to show good faith, sign our police officers contract, and support our police officers union. Remember our hard-working DPW workers. We support our DPW workers. They need a raise. Honorable Commissioner Riley, the hero that saved our public school, our public school because of his impeccable leadership of Honorable Commissioner Riley, is one of the best public school in the nation. But remember, Lawrence Public School with a budget of more than $200 million, our teachers do not have a contract. Work hard, support our awesome Lawrence Teachers Union and Frank McLaughlin. We must get a contract for our teachers and support them. In the year of 2018, our city, your city, must be a champion of respect and appreciation for the union right. Remember our police department with a budget of only $12 million, doing awesome job. Support our police officers and their union. Remember your campaign promise, save Lawrence, prosper Lawrence, only possible if you and Mayor Rivera support our police officers and seniors officers union. Our firefighters are working very hard, our best worker of DPW. Be proud to wear this pin in support of our Lawrence Teachers Union, the architect of new Lawrence Teachers Union. All the Teachers Union and Lawrence Public School must know that our citizen are behind them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malley. Next person is Joseph D'Amico.
Good evening, Joseph D'Amico, living in Lawrence, O'Rourke. I'm just going to bring up a few questions. It's, I know we're going to have a public hearing about the streets and the sidewalks. As a landowner of multiple properties, both in the north and the, north and the south, some of my properties do not have sidewalks. I know we're looking at an ordinance to improve of cleaning the snow off those streets. One of my land, one of my properties has over 100 feet of frontage. There is no way a normal landowner can clean all that up. Fifty years ago, we used to set the city, we used to have snowplows just for sidewalks. The other part of the issue about kids going to school, we have a lot of busing in the city. Ninety percent of the kids that get on the bus get dropped off within 25 feet or 50 feet of the entrance of a school. So, if we decide to enforce that law, I'm going to be asking most of the landlords, first of all, put a petition in that we want all new sidewalks in the city. Second of all, who's going to pay for it? Third, the money we save from that, does that mean we eliminate the busing? The law states two miles away from schools that incorporates a bus. We can save millions of dollars out of the school budget. I'm just bringing this up now, so people have that in their mind. Once we get to the real public hearing, they'll have some other things to add to that problem. Or, how to solve the problem. Again, solving the problem, seeing that streets, sidewalks are cleared, there's no place we'll put the snow. Enforcement of, no parking on one side of the street, if that was the case, it wouldn't matter, the sidewalks would be clean. It would still be parking. When I was a kid, I was a patrol leader. We used to have the procession of kids going up and down the street, safely going to school. Maybe we have to bring that back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D'Amico. Next person is Dick Russell.
Good evening, Counselors. My name is Dick Russell. I reside 34 Cross Street in the city. First, I was going to have some nice mellow comments about various issues, but my president, no, our president had to open his mouth and try to blame Lawrence for New Hampshire's drug problems. Why doesn't New Hampshire try to educate their young about the pitfalls of drug use? Why should they do that when they can blame Lawrence for all the lack of having programs? In my several attempts to get elected in Lawrence, I have said Lawrence has to work as a team. Nobody cares about Lawrence. We are a failed social experiment that only gets worse. A suggestion to dissolve our drug-dealing image, do as Israel does in its airports, profile potential problems. Out-of-state plated cars in the city at 11:00 PM ain't sightseeing. Stop these people, identify them, escort them out of town, and notify their local police agencies where they've been. Screw the ACLU. If these drug problems were happening in their neighborhoods, they would, they would look at profiling as a way to resolve them. Elected officials in Lawrence, Lawrence, law enforcement officials in Lawrence want to end the problem. What's missing in this equation? The judicial system. The judicial system, a system that allows plea bargaining on drug offenses. In conclusions about this subject, it's Lawrence against the rest of the world. We have to try and resolve our drug problems regardless of the legal consequences. After all, no one seems to want to do anything or even care about the source of this problem. Next. Another winter parking ban season has come and almost gone. None of you are willing to touch the asinine and archaic winter parking ordinance. I can't understand why you won't make Lawrence adopt an ordinance more in line with some of the surrounding communities have as their winter parking rules. Liberalize the rules, raise the fines, might be an answer. Besides, changing the ordinance would give me that much less to complain about. Sounds like a win-win situation to me. Knowing the priorities of the council, this issue will get pushed to the proverbial back of the burner and get forgotten about as winter departs and loud noise season returns. With that being said, I appreciate the time to address you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. I am now submitting these names to the record. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Now, moving on with the public hearings, Document 38917, a speed limit, Everett Street, 25 miles per hour, was placed on the agenda by Counselor Abdou. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 389, 2017. Notice is hereby given. The city council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 20th, 2018, in council chambers to on New Commons Street at 7:00 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony and information and public input concerning a proposed amendment to the revised ordinance for the city Lawrence, to be further amended by adding a new paragraph to the maximum motor vehicle speed ordinance concerning Everett Street, 25 miles per hour, for the complete length of the street. To the extent there exists any ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect. Only persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity, as published on March 8th.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Name an address for the record, please.
I'm Jim Madolo, and I live at 100 Everett Street, at the corner of Belknap. And thank you. The volume of the traffic on the street has increased dramatically over the years. The road is used by a number of residents to go from South Broadway to River Road and to the highway. And another reason why they do that is, most of the side streets, such as Coolidge and Dana Street, they all have four-way stop signs. So, Everett Street, other than the stop sign that's at my corner, has a straight road from Newton Street up to my corner. So, it's used as a dragway. Most people, I shouldn't say most, I'll say a lot of folks exceed the speed limit of 30 miles an hour. At times, they exceed 40 and 50. Late at night, some individuals drag race side by side, all the way up to Ferber Street. I have a neighbor that almost got killed a week and a half ago. And the traffic, if I had to estimate, it's used by hundreds, if not a thousand vehicles per day. In the morning, it's heading west, and at night, it's heading back east. In addition to the speeding, many of the drivers are not paying attention to the driving. They're texting while they're driving, or they're reading emails while they're driving. So, they're not paying attention to the speed limit. The Riverfront State Park, containing basketball courts and tennis courts, as well as a children's playground, is located on Everett Street, which is utilized by hundreds of residents on a daily basis during, during the good weather. In addition to the Riverfront State Park, the Abe Shera Boathouse is located on Eaton Street, which is located off of Everett Street. The Wetherby School is located just two blocks away from Everett Street. So, many children walk on the sidewalks where there are sidewalks. There's not any sidewalks in the entire street. Some blocks have no sidewalks at all, so they have to walk on the street. And when you've got these speeding cars going by, it really gets dangerous. One resident utilizes a motorized wheelchair to get around, and he must use the street because there's no sidewalk at his block, and that puts himself in danger. During the past couple of years, there's been four accidents on the street. One car went through my fence and caused $5,000 worth of damage, because they were over the speed limit on icy roads. Another individual hit my neighbor's fence at 99 Everett Street, because they were speeding and not paying attention. Another individual ran the stop sign at my corner and hit the telephone pole on the opposite side of the road in front of 110 Everett Street. And on September 8th of 2016, a vehicle hit a parked SUV in front of 83 Everett Street, and it was a hit-and-run. So, you can see the speeding, and that was at the top of the hill. So, they come up the hill flying, and if you're, you know, crossing the road, you're putting your life in danger. Recently, last year, electronic crosswalk signs were installed on Everett Street for the benefit of the children, so you can press the button and it would light up. Well, a couple of weeks ago, one of those signs got knocked down, because they were speeding on Everett Street, and they could not negotiate the curb in front of 10 Kingston Street. And of course, I was driving down there that morning, and I reported it to Counselor Abdou, as well as the DPW director. I've been working with Officer Sean Conway regarding enforcement, and he's been very helpful to me. And other cities such as Somerville, Medford, and Boston, just to name three, have reduced the speed limit citywide to 25 miles an hour. And in some instances, and I can point one out, I believe it's Medford, because I go to the Little Sisters of the Poor each Saturday morning, they have what they call safety zones, where in certain sections, they have the speed limit of 20 miles an hour. And that's what, all I have to say about the speed limit. And that goes, now, that's for Everett Street. I'm not sure if anyone's here for the Rose Street.
Once we get to that document, we'll discuss it.
Excuse me?
Once we get to the next document, we'll talk about Rose.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in the audience that wishes to speak?
Good evening, Mr. President, member of the council. I'm not sure if this is appropriate time to me to speak of the 124 slash 17 wage thefts.
Not, not yet.
Not yet.
Yeah, I'll follow.
I just want to make sure when it's appropriate then.
Not a problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what's your motion?
Mr. President, make a motion to approve.
Second.
To approve has been made, properly seconded. Discussion? Counselor Payano? Counselor Abdou was the author. Counselor Abdou?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Mr. Madolo for his comments earlier. For many of you Counselors that are returning from the last council, you recall last summer, we were visited by well over...
You may continue, Counselor Abdou.
Thank you, Mr. President. We were visited by well over a dozen citizens that joined Mr. Madolo that evening and to discuss their concerns regarding Everett Street, as well as Rose Street, which you'll hear about later. hear about later. This is an issue that for the last two terms I've been on the council, that I have, it's been a continuous issue, and I'm sure the at-large councilors have either heard of it or will hear of it. It is a, as Mr. Madolo said, it's a speedway. The Lawrence Police do what they can. To Mr. Madolo's frustration, Mr. President, you know, I, I tell them they do their best because honestly, they, they have been as responsive as they can be under the circumstances. We're a very big city population-wise, and they have a lot of things to do. So working with Mr. Madolo and members of that community, we've, I've spent time at the corner of Everett and Dana. I've walked it with this group last summer. I've walked with Mr. Madolo. I've walked with Chief Fitzpatrick and spoken to Chief Ask about it. Like all of you district councilors who have similar, I'm sure you have similar feeder streets in your district, for the at-large councilors that must get this citywide, it's a problem. It's a nuisance. We have a colleague that's got a proposal to address it citywide. With respect to this particular street, Everett Street, it is a cut-through from Andover to Lawrence, Lawrence to Andover. For those of you, you don't think of it until it's aggregated, but the following items are within a quarter-mile stretch on Everett Street. Riverside State Park, the boat ramp. Just beyond Everett Street is the DEP. The Greater Lawrence Community Boating is on the other end. You have DEP on one end, Greater Lawrence Community Boating on the other. There's been investment by the Commonwealth and the city just as recent as last summer, $300,000 in the Complete Streets, the Mass DOT Complete Streets Grant, that allowed for a new path to bring children from the Weatherby School, which is about two blocks off of Everett Street, bring them to Everett Street, cross Everett Street, and bring them to the aforementioned Boat Ramp Riverside State Park and boating program. This, this $300,000 brings them to a place which is right in the middle of where cars are going the fastest. It is a slalom, for those of you that have driven, coming from Shattuck Street onto Row and down Everett towards Andover, for lack of an expression. And there's, you just tend to pick up speed. I mean, I, I know I've done it myself, and it is, it is a very thickly settled neighborhood. You know, there, there is documentation that the DPW Director provided us on the three items I have before you tonight, and each one of them speaks to the thickly settled nature of Shattuck, Row, and Everett. But this evening, on this particular piece, I'm asking for your consideration and support of item 38917, to lower the speed limit as but one tool to bring safety to the neighbors, to bring some sanity for the neighbors, for the children at the Weatherby School, and any Laurentian that uses Riverside State Park and the Boat Ramp. And with that, I would conclude my comments.
Thank you, Councilor Abdu.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Payano?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Councilor Abdu, for bringing this proposal forward. I think that speeding is an issue that's not just happening in one community, it's happening throughout the entire city. It's, it's a big problem. And the problem is not that people are going 30 miles per hour, but people are going 50, and they're going 60 miles per hour. And, you know, while this is a big city population size, it's a small city, seven square miles. And I think one of the things that we have to push as councilors is getting the department to have a campaign around enforcing traffic violations. I've spoken to the chief, and I know he says that there's, you know, some new guys coming in, and, you know, the plan is to, to do just that. When you go into most towns, there are, you know, quote-unquote "speed traps." It's not that they have police officers there all the time, but they have them enough that as soon as you approach those areas, you start, you automatically start slowing down because you think, oh, there might be someone there. And I think, you know, until we do that citywide, until there's true enforcement in this city, we could decrease it to 15, and it wouldn't so much matter. Because even the case right now, even at school zones, people are driving over, you know, at 50 on school zones. So I, you know, so I think it's important that we sort of understand that to change behavior, we have to think more than just a sign. Because the sign itself is shown, you know, I presented a report to, to council members a few weeks ago, and with that, you know, I point out that there's data that shows that even when you decrease a speed limit by five or six miles, it doesn't significantly change the, the speed that people are traveling in that area if the people find that that speed is unreasonable or there's no enforcement. What we have today, you know, there, there is no traffic report for, for this street. You know, the traffic report would detail whether or not changing this would be reasonable or not. It's also part of, so within the memo that I presented to all of you as well, you know, I talk about sort of the different processes that need to, the different steps that need to happen before the state sort of approves a change in speed from 30 to 25. And, you know, step number two, number three, is that traffic report. Without that traffic report, this is not an enforceable law. I know in the past, the city has put, you know, stop signs, and they've put changed speed limits in, in different areas. But, you know, technically, if someone, let's say if I'm traveling 60 miles per hour on a street that has been, has been decreased, you could fight that ticket in court just by asking, was there a traffic report done in this street? And if the traffic report wasn't done, then this doesn't, then this is not enforceable. So, you know, I, I think, my view, that we should give time for the DPW to do this traffic report. When I spoke with the mayor a few weeks ago, he said there was money for the traffic report. So, you know, once we have that in hand, then we can see, and it, it could be that this street definitely meets sort of the state guidelines for that, but once we have that data, we can make a good, informed decision.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Through your Council President, I just want to, to agree with Dave Abdu on this item. We have an issue here in the city of Lawrence, and we, as a legislative body, we have a job to do. If we don't do nothing, nothing is going to happen. Right now, what we're doing, we're creating an impact. And once we create an impact, we're going to have new signs, we're going to have new enforcement, we're going to have new people following the rules. We're sending a message to the city of Lawrence that we are adopting chapter 97, section 17C, which regulates the speed limit and reduces it to 25 miles an hour. This is something that we need in the city of Lawrence. This is something that, on this particular case, if we don't have traffic study, traffic study is going to be done sooner than later for the entire city, which is going to be covering this specific item. At the end of the day, what, what I would like to see is the entire city, Lawrence, 25 miles per hour now as a hashtag because we need it. We need it today, not yesterday. 35 miles an hour, this is when you're going to be receiving a ticket. If we reduce the speed limit to 25 according to the state law, you are not able to receive a ticket if you don't, if you don't go above the speed limit by 10 miles an hour, the state of Massachusetts. With that said, 35 miles an hours, if, if somebody get hit by a car at that speed, that means dead. That's, that is research showing that. At 25 miles an hour, that means emergency room. Nobody want to get hit by a car, but those are realities. Those are facts. We need to support this item. We need to support the reduction of the speed limit in the entire city, and we should be looking forward to create impact in the city of Lawrence. The new signs that are going to be established, if we adopt this section 17C, are going to be extremely bright. It's going to, it's going to send a message. 30 years ago, probably, or more, we, we put signs up in the city of Lawrence, 30 miles an hour. People pass by those signs, they don't even see them anymore. How many we have throughout the entire city? We don't know. Probably a little bit. I drive by, I don't see any. It is a matter of getting up to speed, doing what we need to do, and passing this ordinance as well as the, all the ordinance that we're going to be reviewing today, as well as the ordinance that we have proposed to reduce the speed limit throughout the entire city. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilor. Vice President, Councilor De La Cruz?
Yes, well, I have a concern. My concern is that when people are asking for something that is an emergency, it takes such a long time to wait for a study of the community to be able to solve the problem. Then according to what I see, I passed by the street that you mentioned, and let me tell you, Weatherby School, so far, we haven't get an accident, but it's very dangerous to pass by because people are not respecting the 20 mile per la, per hour. Then I think we should solve the problem at this moment until we get the study of the, of the Department of DPW, because it's going to take forever. It's going to take forever. It's happening on Ferry Street, it's happening everywhere in this city. People are not respecting the speed limit. Before we get in, to set the rules or the changes that we're going to make, we also had to do a media report where we inform people about what is going to happen, the, when we're going to start, when the study is over, what we're going to do. But up to this moment, the study is taking forever, and problems are not being solved. I was almost killed on Berkeley, Berkeley Street twice, on Ferry Street twice. I'm, I'm an adult. Can you imagine, kid? Then we need to solve solutions, find solutions to those kind of problems today, and then we wait for the study that is going to take about a year. I don't think this study is going to take less than six months to be solved.
Any councilors that hasn't spoken yet? Councilor Payano, and then Councilor Abdu?
So, so I'll, I'll just finish with this. I think if, if the council votes today to approve this, according to Director Hackas, it's not an enforceable law. So that if right now, someone is caught going 50 or 60, and the speed says 25, and they go to court, and they try to take out, you know, throw out the ticket, but they'll ask, was there a traffic study done for this, and then they get away? I think that's not what we're trying, you know, that's not what we're looking for. What we're looking for is to change the behavior of that area, and, you know, and I understand that there's a need to, there's a need for action, but I think, you know, that we should, we should do it the right way. And that's what I'll say with that.
Abdu?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the comments of my fellow district councilors. I appreciate it. You know, oftentimes, we, we expect big answers and comprehensive cures for problems, and oftentimes, we get frustrated because nothing happens. And for the new councilors, you know, these things go on day by day, month by month, and as a district counselor, I can only speak for myself, but, you know, it's the constituent calls and emails, and this one I've heard loud and clear for a few years, and I know you all do, whether it be Ferry Street or Ames Street last year. These are, these are issues, these are, we, we have solutions. And I respectfully disagree with Councilor Payano because I too have spoken to Mr. Hackas. And if you do not meet the minimum criterion of vehicles, there is, under the Mass DOT road inventory, an exception. And it's in, I assume we all have this? Did we all get the recommend we did? Saying yes. So I'd refer you to this. There are multiple, but this is indeed certainly meets the thickly settled definition. And I think for most of us, we live in a very thickly settled city, so I can't imagine many places that doesn't fit that definition. But in all seriousness, I, I can't wait to engage in the, the item that Council Rodriguez has brought forward for citywide. I will be supporting that. And frankly, I, I, you know, Council Payano brings up a good thing about study. Certainly, there is always a place for study, and the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission does great work. But I, for one, don't want to wait. And I believe you can walk and chew gum, and I believe we can pass this this evening. Signs can be posted. If bad characters want to appeal, God bless them. But in the meantime, if it saves one accident, God forbid it saves one life. And with the Weatherby School nearby, in the park, in the boat, I feel confident tonight, asking for your consideration to support this, pass it. And based on the materials that Director Hackas has provided, Lieutenant Conway from the Police Department as well, has spoken in the past, actually, not, I stink corrected, not on this particular item. But again, I, I do think there's a place for studies. I do believe there's a place for a more comprehensive answer. Tonight, I'm looking to work with the community, our communities, to fix a few streets and a neighborhood. So with that, I rest. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Abdu. Councilor Levy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question for Mr. Payano. Do you know when the speed limit story is going to start?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The speed limit story is going to start.
When the zone is going to start?
Yeah.
The speed limit, the traffic study?
Oh, that's, no, so, so...
I do have an answer.
I, I do not know when.
Councilor Rodriguez, do you have an answer?
Yes. I just emailed Mr. Carlos Hackes, the Director of Public Work, to begin the meetings, to be able to have the traffic study throughout the city, including the speed limit study. And that's going to happen hopefully, once the storm is, is done, it's over. In a few days, we're going to start a conversation in terms of when that's going to happen, but that's going to, that's going to be sooner than later, hopefully.
So this is by sure that this is an agenda for, for doing that as soon as possible?
That's, that's...
Because we are having a lot of requests regarding putting down the speed limits in so many street and so many places. So, and I know that this is one of the part that are asking so to have a story on that. So I would like to hear that this is going to be like a priority in the next couple of day or the next couple of weeks, not just to leave it for so long that we all can be on the same page working on the speed limit that we are trying to set in here in the city of Lawrence.
Yes. It's happening.
Thank you, councilors. I am ready. Just one final question, and I will, I will call the question, Councilor De La Cruz.
My concern is that we keep postponing items in the agenda. I like to see things being solved more quickly, and then when we get the traffic report, we can make the changes that are needed. It's going to take longer with the traffic report because we had to educate the people again, we had to publicize the new changes, and we will have to use the different kind of medias that we have to inform. Then that can take more than three months.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilor Reyes, absent. Councilor Levy?
Yes.
Council LaPlante?
Yes.
Councilor Abdu?
Yes.
Council Payano?
No.
Council De La Cruz?
Yes.
Council De Peña?
Yes.
Council Rodri, Vice President Rodriguez?
Yes, big time.
The big, big? The Council President?
Yes. Motion passed. Document 39017, speed limit, Rose Street, 25 miles per hour, was placed on the agenda by Councilor Abdu. placed in the agenda by Councilor Abdo, very similar to the one that we just approved. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document three ninety, two thousand seventeen, notice hereby given the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March twentieth, two thousand eighteen, Council Chambers, at seven P M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and input concerning proposed amendments to revise ordinances for the city of Lawrence to be further amended by adding a new paragraph to the maximum speed limit section in certain zones concerning Rose Street, twenty-five miles per hour, for the complete length of this street. To the extent there exist any ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published on March eighth.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard? Name and address for the record, please.
Joe D'Amico, loving Lorenzo Road. I just want to bring up a couple of points. One is, once the snow is over, we're going to have four traffic controllers that give out tickets in the middle of the night, they're going to be back into the day shift on second. Maybe we can deputize them as speed trap enforcement. The second thing I want to bring up is, Nick Colofullis brought up this point twenty years ago. Think there was some type of presentation given of ordinances versus speed limits, whatever. It could be already somewhere in the books. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
So, there you might not, you, oops, so, why reinvent the wheel? Maybe you can find it on an old Council Chamber made, and you save some more time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I was, I was hoping, Jim Madolo again. I was hoping a resident of Rose Street would be able to be here to speak. Basically, it's the same issue involving Everett Street. Rose Street runs into Everett Street, and there's a curve that goes onto, near the boat ramp, near the Riverfront State Park. So, to have the same speed limit on Rose Street would be ideal as Everett Street. The resident told me, since I don't live down there, there was one accident down there, the, the vehicle was heading east and failed to negotiate the curve onto Rose Street and went into the woods. So again, to have the same speed limit for both streets would be ideal, and since the parks are so close by, the safety of the residents and the children is priority one. The, the actual playground is closer to the intersection of Rose and Everett Street, so, and on a summer day, there's hundreds of children out there, and if they're speeding off of Rose Street onto Everett Street, someone's going to get hurt. There, there is an electronic sign that was installed last year, but that's further up on Everett Street, so they cross the road closer to Rose Street. So, ideally, limit, that speed limit to twenty-five would be perfect as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Public hearing is now closed. Councilors, what's your motion?
Mr. President, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussions? Uh, Councilor Abdo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will not repeat what I said in the last piece. This is identical to Everett Street, like Mr. Madolo said. For those of you that, again, recall coming from South Broadway, down Shattuck by the D E P, and you hug the river, you've gone from Shattuck Street to Rose Street, and you don't even know it, and you go from Rose Street to Everett Street, and you don't even know it. Proven map, coming from South Broadway, you've got the boat ramp right there, you go straight down Everett Street, park is where the X is. Somewhere in here, Row becomes Everett Street, and you don't know it. It's the slalom I mentioned before. The road just, it, it makes for a beautiful slalom course, which unfortunately means it doesn't slow you down, and there's a crosswalk right at that slalom, which, from what I understand from the neighbors, is that one of the new three hundred thousand, well, part of the three hundred thousand dollar effort, the crosswalk, illuminated crosswalk sign has been destroyed, and the DPW has been informed is going to replace it. But again, just speaks to what goes on, on this particular street, no different than any one of the other areas of the city. With that, Mr. President, I, I have no further comments.
Okay. Councilors, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Council Vice President?
Yes.
Council De Peña?
Present.
Marked. Council De La Cruz?
Yes.
Council Payano?
No.
Council Abdo?
Yes.
Council LaPlante? Council Levy?
Yes.
Council Reyes? Noted. And Council President Vasquez?
Yes, motion passed. Next document is document three ninety-one seventeen, stop sign, four-way at the intersection of Carlton Street and Everest Street, placed in the agenda by Councilor Abdo. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document three ninety-one, two thousand seventeen, notice hereby given the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March twentieth, in Council Chambers, two hundred Columbus Street, at seven P M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the city of Lawrence to be further amended by adding a new paragraph to the stop sign and flashing red signals ordinance to be inserted in proper order. As there are currently stop signs governing the flow of north and southbound traffic on Everett Street, the proposed amendment is to provide for a stop sign at Carlton Street, eastbound and westbound drivers on Carlton Street at Everett Street. To the extent there exist any ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only. This ordinance of approval will create a four-way stop sign at that intersection. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published, marked eight.
Okay. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard?
Based on the fact, currently Everett Street only has two stop signs. It's a long street from Shattuck Street all the way up to Ferber Street. Ideally, to have a stop sign placed at the intersection of Everett and Cowton would help in reducing the speed of the vehicles. Now, it is on a hill, however, when cars are, I'll give you an example. When a car is stopped at the intersection at my home and heading east, they step on that gas, because everybody's in a rush these days. While they're flying over the hill, you can't see what's over that hill until you get right on top of it. And again, you know, a lot of the homes in that section of the street are two tenements, and they've been subdivided, so where there used to be only a couple of families in each home, now there's a lot of people in each, each home. So there's a lot of cars parked on each side of the road. So ideally, to have a four-way stop at that intersection would be perfect. Most of the other streets near my, in the Cowtonville area, do have four-way stops. Everett Street does not, except at Everett and Valnap and Everett and Chukesbury. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Councilors, what's your motion?
Mr. President, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Councilor Payano.
Thank you, Council President. So, one of the things that you guys will come to learn about me, that I think, you know, process is very important. I, I don't know, well, I studied up a lot when, when it came to the reducing the speed limit because of the motion that was going to be presented two weeks ago. I'm not as informed as, as maybe I should be, as far as sort of decisions, what you take into account when you make a decision about putting a four-way stop sign. You know, again, in, in the previous motion, I, I mentioned, you know, the traffic study, and I know that when this was passed from ordinance, one of the things that it says was pending a report from the DPW Director or anyone under him to evaluate and study the area. I think that's, that might be different than a traffic study, I don't know, maybe it's the same thing. So I just wanted to, you know, first ask the question if Director Hakkas did evaluate that, and if he, you know, if, what his thoughts were on it, if, if any. Maybe there weren't any thoughts.
We did receive a report from Director Hakkas.
And, and he, so I'm asking, did he, did he, did he evaluate the, the four-way stop, and he said that, did he give a favorable recommendation?
Yes.
Thank you. If I could answer through you, Mr. President, in, in at least my six years on the City Council, the DPW Director nor any, they've consulted, we've consulted them, we did last year on, on another four-way stop, but the practice of this council has been to solicit both the police and the DPW for their comment with respect to accidents, and I believe we received the police report last November. And then, the DPW was just requested two weeks ago when we received this document. Again, the character of this four-way stop request complements the efforts of the speed requests, and that is to protect the drivers coming off of Carlton, which is a perpendicular street to Everett and is the heart of Carltonville, which is the neighborhood. And for those of you that are familiar with the neighborhood, can understand that it's on the crest of a hill. So you're going fast, come to the crest of a hill, and you continue down the other side, and regardless which way you're coming, either east or west, you're presented with this intersection. And the effort here, and I know we only see Mr. Madolo this evening, but for those of you that were here last summer again, there were far more people. We, I believe the clerk, somewhere in his, in his files, has the petition, the four to five-page petition that we received with signatures. So, there is no formal study. There, in my experience, never has been, you know, with all due respect, this is, I think, a city council trying to respond, be responsive to the citizens, and, you know, we do it within the laws, we do it within the confines of our own ordinances, and oftentimes, we confuse the guidance that we ask for from our professionals, our public safety professionals, our engineering professionals, our public works professionals, as law, as must-dos. And sometimes, that isn't the case. And in this particular case, again, I won't go on, we, we typically don't have studies on four-way stops. We do ask, we do solicit public safety and from time to time, public works. And I will leave it at that.
Any Councilor that hasn't spoken yet? Okay, Councilor Payano?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Councilor Abdo, for, for your response. I, I was able to take a quick look at what Council Hakkas, Council Hakkas, what Director Hakkas wrote, and it, you know, all it essentially says is that there, there should be an engineering study, and then, it seems like the rest of the memo explains what an engineering study is. I think, you know, what I'm running up against is just the, the council has a certain way of, of doing things, and how things were done previously, and how they continue to be done. I'm of a belief that while the folks that are experts in the field aren't the, the, the judge or the, the decision makers, right, in the, in the end of the day, whether the decision makers, their account and their expertise should be taken into account. So, you know, with this and other things, I, I think it's important to get that information.
Bless you.
Bless you. You know, so unfortunately, that we don't have it today, but I think the, we should look at the practice of the city, you know, on how we, you know, determine, you know, speed, stop signs, parking, you know, all that, because it, it can't just be done at a whim. And it, it sounds like, from what I'm, the testimony that I'm hearing, it sounds like there's probably reason to have this, but there is a process in, in order to do that, and those are the reports and the studies. But I, I will, I will digress and leave my comments there.
Councilor De La Cruz?
Thank you, President. My concern is that when, when the neighbors bring a problem to us, we need to listen, we need to hear, because they are the one living there, suffering the consequence, going through the problems every single day, and we have to listen to them. That's my main concern. We have to listen because we can find all the datas or the studies, but our people are telling us, we are going through these problems, and we're looking for solution. Then, I'm not going to say that the neighbors, the people in the community are going to understand everything, every process, but we have to find a way to facilitate, to understand the needs of the neighbors and to try to solve their problems, because otherwise, I see that it has been on, on, on table, on, on the agenda. I started in January, and we haven't say, find a solution. But I saw that some of these petitions has been there since two thousand and fourteen. If the study hasn't been done, then, you know, we have to go through what we have in front of us. This is saying that there is a need in that community, that is a crossing problem that is affecting people in that area, then we have to make those changes. The study might take forever. And, and, and we, all my respect to everybody, I think that we need to move as, as, trying to avoid accidents at this moment, and that's what I see. I went through the Weatherby School, I don't know if they have a guard during dismissal time, but let me tell you, it's very dangerous, very dangerous. And, and the park that you were talking about in the corner, I pick up my granddaughters through there, I go to the Andover Street to pick up my daughter, my granddaughter, and the park, right there in the corner, finally, they put like a crossing paint on the floor, but before that, oh my God, you can end it up at the playground, because fifty mile per hours, you can end it up at the playground inside. Then, let's try to avoid the concern, to listen to the concern of the people in the community, and then solve the problem. At this moment, this is what is happening. And then we go through the study, because the study is going to take a long time.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Sure. I just want to point out a few, some, some information that is required for a four-way stop sign. According to the MutCD, which are the federal regulation, federal regulations for, for traffic controls, we need to met one of the seven warrants that are required for a stop sign. Only one is required. Once one of those warrants are met, a four-way stop sign is justified. Some of those warrants are the vehicle volume, the side distance, the, the crash, the crash data that we have available, that, and not necessarily, or only, the crash data that is being reported, it can be weakness as well. And those are part of the criteria that a traffic study- And those are part of the criteria that a traffic study requires. When we talk about traffic studies, we're not necessarily are looking to have a 200-page study. For a four-way stop sign, if one of those seven warrants are met, a four-way stop sign is justifiable. And this is basically what we've been doing, at least for the last two years, that we asked the DPW to actually go up there, read what the MUTCD requires, see if applied to that specific criteria, of that specific situation that we're facing. And, and this is exactly what Mr. Hakkis have done. He went to the MUTCD, he looked at the traffic regulations, as well as the vehicles, the daily, average daily traffic per day around the area. He looked at the characteristic of that specific street and recommended. A four-way stop sign is not, the, 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 the main reason for a four-way stop sign is not necessarily to reduce the speed, as we previously approached, or previously talked about that item on the previous topic. This is exactly to reduce or to control the intersection in terms of volume, in terms of crash data, in terms of side distance, in terms of average daily traffic around the area. And I think this is more than justifiable, a four-way stop sign in that specific area. With that said, I will definitely support that.
Council President. Councilor Payano.
Thank you. Just a question for Councilor Rodriguez. You have a document in, in, in front of you, and I wasn't, I didn't see that document. So you're saying that the, so you explained the process on how a, the DPW reviews a four-way stop sign. And you said that that, that was followed, that the Director Hakkis took a look at it, and he says that, sort of gives it like a favorable or, or says that it is possible to do that. Is that, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor De Peña.
Yes. I know the more, more important tonight for everybody is keep residents' safety, but no matter what, how many signs the city put, new sign, is the police department don't enforce the ordinance, nothing changed. It's very important, you try, you know, work together to the police department, because that new sign don't reduce the problem. It's enforced. The city have a lot of ordinance for many years sleeping in the paper. If the city don't enforce, nothing changed. It's very important, try enforce that on your ordinance. That's my commentary.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document 518, Handicap Parking, 199 Bofford Street, to be deleted. It was placed on the agenda by Brenda Hernandez. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document number five, 2018. Notice is hereby given to the city council to hold a public hearing Tuesday, March 20th in Council Chambers, 200 Common Street, 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the city Lawrence to be further amended by deleting the following paragraph to the handicap parking section to be inserted in proper alphabetical order. Bofford Street North Side from 1.124 west of the intersection of Winter Bath to 1.140 feet west of the intersection of Winter Bath. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published on March 8.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Councilors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document 718, Removal of Snow from Aronings and Sidewalks. Clarification of Ordinance Section 12.04.040. Placed in the agenda by Council Vice President Rodriguez and Councilor Payano. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document number seven, 2018. Notice is hereby given to the city council to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 20th in Council Chambers at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinance for the city Lawrence to be amended as follows. By deleting the current section 12.04.040 concerning removal of snow from aronings and sidewalks and inserting in its place a new section, same number, removal of snow in aronings and sidewalks with new paragraphs to be provided, addressing the requirements for snow and slush removal to be removed by the owner within 24 hours, requirements for ice to be removed by the owner of any building in a building sidewalks or curbs and ramps within six hours in which any portion of the sidewalk or the curb, or curb ramp is encumbered by ice. Subsection C, providing that City Lawrence Council on Aging may provide the elderly and disabled with a limited list of professional snow removal companies and individuals. Subsection D, enforcement penalties established for fines in the amount, in graduated amounts of $100 for a first offense, second offense of $200, and third offense of $300 for certain violations to the extent there exists ordinances of the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only. A, an abbreviated version was published in the newspaper on March 8. The complete and unabridged version was posted on the public website for the city council public hearing section.
Okay, public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard?
Homay Malii, 53, Chester Street. Good evening, your honors. I live at District E. District E is the home to, to schools, Robert Frost's school and Wetherby's schools. In the days of the snowy like that, if you watch early morning, the children, how they approach to the school, go to the school, they have to walk in the street, because all the side, sidewalks are full of the snow. If they Boston beat all the problem they have, they have such an ordinance and they enforce them, that a property owner is responsible for remove, removal of ice and snow in the sidewalk in front of his house or property, we can do the same. Since these ordinance save life of our children, so you have to consider how the children can walk among the cars. So enforcement of this ordinance guarantees such a safety. Also, in District E, majority of the homeowner, they clean in front of their house, the stairs, and then, I don't think this is a big deal to clean, you know, sidewalk in front of the house, especially surrounding the school area, like a Robert Frost, you know, adjacent neighbor, very important, or Wetherby as well. So we encourage you as a citizen, please pass this ordinance, because guarantee and safeguard safety of our children. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Joe De Miko, living Lorenzo Road. I'd like to see some addendums made to this ordinance. One, why can't we have it just like they have the crime? You know, 200 feet, you can't sell drugs. Those are the areas that they should have pocket, snow removal off their sidewalks. Part of the streets on Mount Vernon and by the frost, there is no sidewalks. So a lot of them, we'd have to have sidewalks put in. All I'm looking for is some addendums prior to, prior to you making $100 fees or $200 fees or $300. We've been having this problem for the last 70 years. So if we can just figure out what areas or what parts of the city really need to have street removals and the sidewalks cleaned, maybe that'll clear up some of the issues. The other part is, if this kid's getting a school bus, that means we don't have to pay busing to go to those schools. That money there can be used for new sidewalks and clean sidewalks all the way around. That's all I'm trying to say. I'm not against the snow removal.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi, Jamila Martinez. So I am a very concerned parent. I see a lot of children walking to school on the streets. I myself attend a lot of meetings at the schools, and I have to walk in the street as well, because there is no, walking on the sidewalks, because they're full of snow. And so I'm here today to ask for you guys to enforce the ordinance that's already in place on paper, and see how we can push it, and how you want us as the community to help you get more parents here to vocalize. Because we really need to put this forward and approve it as soon as possible for the safety of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez, can you please state your address?
Tensaxonia Avenue.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening, councilors. My name's still Dick Russell. I still live at 34 Cross Street. I'll start by quoting the existing ordinance 12.04.040. Removal of Snow from Aronings and Sidewalks. The tenant, occupant, or owner of any building or land bordering, bordering a, on any street or way where there is a sidewalk or awning shall within 24 hours after ceasing to fall of any snow cause same to be removed from the awning or sidewalk. Due to the wording of this ordinance, the city admits to ownership of the sidewalk and admits that the sidewalk is actually part of the street. There is no set measurement as to how much snow must be removed from the sidewalk to comply with the above-mentioned ordinance. Now, to the mathematical aspects of the ordinance. Most plastic scoop, snow shovels are about 18 inches wide. That's about 30% width of a five-foot sidewalk. Most snow blowers are 24 inches wide, which is about 40% of a width of a five-foot sidewalk. The proposed 42-inch pa, width of path that was mentioned in the committee hearing is 70% of the width of the sidewalk, of a five-foot sidewalk. As a quick question, I would like to know, A, I would like to know where the 42-inch figure came from, okay? I will use an extreme example of snow, that being the time period from January 24th to February 25th, or 22nd of 2015, where we received 94 and a half inches of snow. The snow piles at the curb would be a little over, in the various scenarios I mentioned, would be a little bit over 10 feet, 11 feet, and 13 and a half feet high, based if they were evenly piled up. Some of us realize that this isn't going to happen in the real world, the snow shoveling. Snow gets piled up, when snow gets piled up, a fact in the engineering world known as the angle of repose takes effect. The angular repose is a point at which a pile of granular material, which snow falls into that category, will not get any higher due to the slippage factor known as the angular repose. Unless the base of the pile is allowed to be as large as possible, that height of the snow pile will not exceed a certain limit. Is there a limit to how high the pile, how high of a pile that a person can be forced to shovel snow on? Finally, why do you even bother to change an ordinance that isn't enforced anyways? The private parking lot at the corner of Common and Amesbury Street, the vacant lot at 55 Lowell Street, the medical building at the southwesterly corner of Lowell and Amesbury Street are prime examples of unshovelled sidewalks that, as far as I know, were unticketed for failure to remove snow. I would like to see what we have on the books enforced before you try to change it. So councilors, before you go and reinvent the wheel, make sure that what you are trying to reinvent cannot be fixed by making sure it only needs to be re-inflated. Thank you for the time.
Is there anyone else in the audience?
Council members, my name's Angel, 31 May Street, Lawrence, Mass. Angel Gil. So it's a great proposal, clean streets for, you know, safer sidewalks for, for students to get to school and pedestrians to walk on. I'm all for that. But you gotta look realistically, sometimes there's heavy snowfall that happens throughout every season and now and then, and we have very tight streets in some areas that are not main roads, and the snow gets piled up so high that it can't go anywhere. You, I'm a shovel. I don't own a snow plow. I shovel, you know, on my sister's property in the city. But it gets to the point where there's nowhere to put the snow. You shovel, the plow comes, puts it right back on the sidewalk, and you shovel again and playing that game. And also, there are very narrow streets. When the snow gets ridiculously large, there is nowhere to put it. I see city trucks removing snow from sidewalks in school areas, main roads, you know, main area of transportation. But if you go in the inner city, Myrtle Streets, Park Streets, real tight streets that you have to navigate through the city, I, I don't see snow being removed when it's piled up high and on the sidewalk. I don't think any reasonable landlord, even conscientious landlord, within 24 hours could remove all that type of snow from those sidewalks. So I just think you guys should take into consideration certain circumstances that will lie in, that would, you know, not just, okay, let's penalize these people if they haven't cleaned the sneets and slapped them with a $100, $100 fine, $200 fine. Just look at the realness of the situation. And also note that there could be mitigating circumstances, like extreme weather, that might prevent people to get into the sidewalks in the time that you guys are allowing in the city audience. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Kathy Runge, 32 Drakot Street. I hate to be a downer here, but if you're going to have, and I'm all for cleaning the sidewalks, and there should be a penalty for it, but you should have a penalty for depositing snow on your neighbor's sidewalk too, because you know it happens, it happens. Just wanted to mention that. And secondly, it seems like this ordinance is sort of impossible, the way, it's written a little too strictly. It says, "Removal of any slush or snow should be conducted along the full paved width of such sidewalk or curb ramp." Well, even if you look outside here, the sidewalk goes to the curb. The sidewalk in front of my house is nice and wide, and it goes to the curb. There is no way in the world that anybody could clear to the curb, especially, you know, if it's plowable snow. So I think you should think about that. And also, you know, again, I mean, the ice, within six hours after it becomes encumbered with ice, you should clean your sidewalk. So if I go to sleep at 10, and ice is up at 11, I gotta be up there at 6:00 a.m. unencumbering my sidewalk from ice? I mean, I, I don't know. I just don't think that's going to happen. But anyway, generally, I'm in favor of an ordinance something like this, but I think this is just a little too specific. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Councilors, I will limit comments or questions to one per counselor. We need to move forward with the agenda. Are there any motions on the floor?
Motion to approve. It's like a wait for 30 days.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion, Councilor La Plante.
So like any other ordinance that we have, it's all about enforcement. If it's speeding, if it's snow, it's about enforcement. So we already have, obviously, a law on the books. The law is clearly not as detailed as what the proposal has. Current law is very simple. I think it's got 25 words. "The tenant, occupant, or owner of any building or land bordering on any street or any way where there is a sidewalk or awning shall within 24 hours have it ceasing to fall of any snow cause the same to be removed from the awning or sidewalk." We have it on the books already. What we're doing here is we're going to more depth and more detail. What makes us believe that if we have a, a law on the books today, that us passing this, as well-intentioned as it is, we're going to see greater enforcement of this ordinance? I happen to like the fact that there's a bit more detail, because as you read this, there's a lot, some of it's a lot of discretion. In the proposal, we talk about depth, we talk about senior center, we talk about several other, you know, timing, a little more specific on different things. So I, I'm not sure I agree with all those particular details, but I like the fact that we're more precise, and I think that's a good thing. But I'm curious to hear from the authors as to why is it with this ordinance we'll see a change as opposed to the current ordinance when something could be happening but hasn't?
Through you, Council President.
Are there any, Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes, I want to throw a discussion. I would like to provide some answers in terms of what councilors might, might want to hear. of what councilors might, might wanna hear. But, um, this ordinance, the main reason that we're putting this ordinance together or updating the current ordinance that we have in the city of Lawrence is because, um, we would like people to understand and know that we have a sidewalk, um, ordinance to allow or to tell the residents that they have a responsibility. Since we put this ordinance in the book and we start talking about it, I have noticed that there is people that didn't know that they have that responsibility, and they are doing what they're supposed to do. The intention here is not just to ticket people and to make profit out of this. The intention here is to have our kids to walk in a safe way to school. In the city of Lawrence, we currently have about fourteen thousand students. Many of them walk, at least, to the front of their house. And if that's the case, we need to provide safety, a safety net, and a safety, uh, if there is a safety concern, we should approach it and look for the solution. This ordinance is a lot more comprehensive, and this is gonna help our community to have what we would like to see one day, which is a city that respect the ordinance that we have in place and follow the ordinance, as well as having some type of education system that provide that information to the people that move in or people that are currently living here in the city of Lawrence. We need to look at this ordinance as the way to provide a safety net, like I said. Currently, we have commercial, commercial, uh, business, that they're making a lot of profit here in our city of Lawrence. But guess what? They're not cleaning the sidewalks, the sidewalks in front of them. They should be ashamed. I mean, I don't wanna mention any name, because, I mean, that's kinda like, you know, but we have huge corporations here in the city of Lawrence that they are, if you just walk through Broadway Street, Mayor Pharmacies, not to mention any name, for Mayor Pharmacies and Broadway Street, they're not cleaning their sidewalks. We, if we walk on X Street, Mayor Corporation supermarkets, and I'm not gonna mention any names, but they are throughout Massachusetts. I remember that they have a conflict a few years ago with their employees, not to mention any name, but they're not cleaning the sidewalks. That's in my district. We, we making ordinance here, that's our job, and we creating an impact throughout the community, and this is something that, uh, we working on, and we would like to see, the community to follow the rules, but we need to put it in place. Otherwise, we are gonna face a community that is not complying with the law. With that said, this ordinance is providing a tool to the enforcement agency to go up there and say, "If you are in a single family, you're gonna be ticketed by this much. If you are two-family on this area, you're gonna be ticketed by that much and so far so on." We just wanted to provide a tool to the enforcement agency to be able to enforce this law.
I'd like to reclaim my time, if you don't mind, Mr. President, just because that was a question. I think at the appropriate time, I'd like to offer an amendment with a debate and discussion. I, I think one thing would be helpful to the folks that need to do the enforcement of the ordinance. We have a six-hour for ice and slush and a twenty-four hours for snow. I think that what makes the difference when ice and slush becomes a judgment thing, six hours, for example, if I go to work at eight in the morning and I come back at four, I'm already past the three hours and I don't have a chance to be able to take care of that. Technically, I would be in the line. I think we should try to be as consistent as possible for a couple of things. Twenty-four hours, I would recommend that for everything. That way, it allows people the ability, as one of the speakers said earlier, a chance to go ahead and clean that up. Plus, it also makes it easier for the enforcement officials not to say, "That's ice, that's snow, that's not," and you start debating whether or not what, what it is and what isn't. So that's a recommendation I would have. The last thing I would say before relinquishing the floor would be, um, the last part, it deals with the City of Lawrence Council on Aging, may provide elderly and disabled a limited list of professional snow removal companies and individuals. A limited list of snow removal companies. What is a professional snow removal company? Is that, do you have to have a certain certification for that? Is it, can anybody just say they're the Mark LePlante Shovel Team, my kids come by and they put their names on? Is it as simple as that, or is it?
It's as simple as that.
It could be anybody. You just put your name on a list. I mean, there you go.
Yes.
I just think there might be some, there may be some need for that, that clarity. Is there bonding at all? Are we legally at all in depth for that kind of stuff? If something happens to, have we put that name out there? I just wanna make sure we're clear.
It's two things on the, on the table. So yes, I friend, I, I definitely accept the friendly amendment of that, of being consistent on the six hour for the ice to increase it to, you say, to be consistent, twenty-four hours?
Four hours.
So twenty-four hours for both? That's, that's not a problem. I accept that amendment.
Okay. I have Councilor Payano, Councilor Abdur.
Uh, thank you, Council President. First, I wanna thank my fellow counselor, Giovanni Rodriguez, uh, for, um, you know, sort of helping push this, uh, this motion forward. I think as former school committee members, we probably heard this more than, um, some of my other colleagues in the past seven years. Every time it, while I was in the school committee, every time I got to winter break, you know, parents and students, um, would essentially inform us that it was difficult to, to walk to school. As you know, what we have in Lawrence are community, in our neighborhood schools. So if you are within two miles of a school, uh, you essentially have to walk to school. So you have a lot of walkers out there, which is sometimes why, you know, in the midst of a snowstorm, you know, maybe for a day or two is canceled, and there's always that sort of extra day afterward. Not always, but sometimes there's an extra day that is tacked on afterwards. And the reason for the extra day is, while you might look outside and say, "Well, I wonder why school is canceled when the road is clean," it's because the sidewalks aren't clean. You know, sometimes there are, um, there is snow, there might be, you know, it might be full of ice, and it's not all the households that do this. They tend to be sometimes absentee landlords that do this. And as Councilor Rodriguez says, there are quite a lot of businesses that only shovel sort of like their area, and it's not the small business owners of Lawrence. You see them out there salting, shoveling, you know, everything. It's some of these big corporations that are around, um, are around the city. Now, with this, this is already a requirement, and I, I think, um, and one of the councils, you know, brought up, uh, you know, a, a great question, which is, are we gonna see greater enforcement in this? And the answer is yes, because before, we had zero enforcement. So, you know, when this issue would be brought up to, to the leaders, the reason they said they couldn't enforce it was because there was no penalty behind it. There was no tool to enforce. So what we, we put in place now is that, well, at least that's what I was told. Um, what we're putting in place now are these penalties that I would hope would be used as a, a way to ensure that, uh, business, that people and businesses are doing this. As Councilor Rodriguez says, I don't believe that this is gonna be, um, this is not a way for us to make money. This is a way to nudge people in the right direction and ensure that people do us right for the kids and other pedestrians that are walking. If we wanna make Lawrence a, a safe area, we wanna, we need to make sure that the sidewalks are clean for them, um, for them to walk. As far as the, um, the, you know, the item with, with the, you know, the Council of Aging, um, you know, the way that we envisioned this was just, you know, essentially a list that, you know, anyone that, you know, especially, you know, teens that wanted to sign up to, um, you know, say that they're, they'd be available for shoveling snow, for them to be there. As we said, it, you know, may provide, so it would be up to sort of the Department of Council on Aging to, to figure out, um, how exactly to execute that.
Councilor Abdur.
Thank you, Mr. President. I commend the author for putting this forward and, uh, standardizing the hours. That was a concern. Um, and, you know, one other thing that came to mind when I first read this was, um, one of the challenges we have here in the city is, um, it'll be two, three, four nights after a storm, like we're gonna experience tomorrow. And because of the narrowness of our streets, we have plows doing the odd even sides, right? So tonight, they do the right side, and it puts it all on that sidewalk, and then within twenty-four hours, we clear it, right? But we also clear the odd side, and then tomorrow night, that one's gonna get buried with the street being the other side. So now you're immediately, now, there's nothing we can do about this, right? Cause, but it is something to keep in mind, and it actually plays to what my concern was, the forty-two inches wide, very wide. So I have a snow blower. It's, it was my dad's. It's over forty years old, goes, goes great. But it's a twenty-four-inch bucket. And this last storm, which was heavy, wet cement on the bottom, light fluffy on top, I was having a hard time getting it through there, right? Getting the auger. I made a swipe and a half, because those of you that have snow blowers know that it gets bogged down. So I did a swipe and then a half swipe. That's twenty-four plus twelve, thirty-six inches. And then someone earlier, I believe it was, uh, Council Rodriguez mentioned that the average width of a snow shovel is eighteen inches. So two shovels' width is thirty-six inches. All I'm suggesting, I, I would, you know, I would offer that maybe it would be wise if we maybe narrowed it down, because I didn't even mention the shoveler. So that, that, that poor Joe, or Jane. You know, that's, um, maybe something we consider as thirty-six inches. And I would just close with the fact that, uh, we have a storm tomorrow. So for those of us at home that are listening and watching us, if this passes this evening with the emergency preamble, that this is, takes effect with tomorrow's storm. So please pay attention if you're at home.
Yes, I mean, the, the intention behind, through you, Council President.
No, Councilor DeLa Cruz.
Oh, sorry.
Well, this is an ordinance that has been in place for how long?
A long time.
Many years, right? Okay. But this is a community problem that we need to solve together. It is the problem when the plow clean the, uh, under the sidewalk and put the snow on top of the sidewalk, where it's very hard for people to clean it up. Then, this is a problem that we have in the community, and I think we need to find solutions to the problems. When I called DPW in another city, they had that kind of truck that suck the snow from the, from, under the sidewalk. At this moment, where are we gonna put the snow? It's a community problem. It's a situation that we need to solve. It, it is not a problem that is only me going through that. But I know, because when they clean Prosper Street, they bring the snow from the, from the back, and they put it in my side. Then, it doesn't matter how they do it. Thursday, I had a conversation with the DPW department, because I couldn't leave my house. Then, my private person who cleaned my, my, the front of my house, he doesn't have a place where to put the snow. He called me three times. Where will I put the snow? I cannot put it on the street. I cannot, what, what I'm gonna do? Then, it is the problem that we need to solve. Before putting this ordinance in place, I wanted to see different forum discussing in the community, where are we gonna put the snow? What are we gonna do with the snow? It's a problem. It's not a situation that we can solve it in one day. But, uh, I don't want the snow plow to put the snow on my sidewalk, because it's gonna give me extra work to do. And if I don't clean my side in twenty-four hours, I will have more snow than what I expect. Then, um, up to now, I don't think I will vote for this, because it is the community problem. We don't have the trucks. We don't have the snow removal. We don't have the pickup truck to pick up the snow. We don't have solution to the problems. Then, what the community is going to do with the snow is my question.
Councilor Rodriguez.
Yes. Uh, the reason behind, um, through you, Council President, the reason behind the forty-two inches, we, we were looking into the ADA requirements to have a handicapped person walking through, and we were also looking into the, uh, average width of the sidewalk around the city of Lawrence on, or throughout Massachusetts. The regular, uh, width of a typical sidewalk around Massachusetts is about sixteen inches, five feet wide. Uh, that's the minimum requirements. So with the forty-two inches, we were gonna leave a foot and a half or eighteen inches on average, typical. Obviously, there is locations that, that are not complying with the ADA because of the ADA requirements. The, the ADA regulations come up in the eighties, and they're, we've been, uh, here in Lawrence for more than a hundred years, but now, I definitely, we will definitely consider the thirty-six inches, uh, width, uh, as a friendly amendment as well. And, uh, that's gonna leave that, uh, the snowbank on the future of about twenty-four inches wide. Uh, so if we have a width of thirty-six inches, we have a five, five foot or sixteen inches, uh, wide sidewalk, uh, we clean thirty-six inches, and we're gonna leave in, uh, we're gonna be leaving on the side or in front of that, on the curve side, about twenty-five inches of a snowbank, which is gonna be a more than enough, uh, to put the snow on. And that's gonna basically, um, probably solve the issue of, um, Council Abdu and as well of, um, Maria DeLa Cruz, where we're gonna put the snow? Twenty-four inches wide, a snowbank.
Councilor, seeing there's no further discussion.
Mr. President, would the, would the, would the author waive the, or take away the emergency waiver? Because I believe that there's an opportunity here that we're not informing the community of this new changes, and it's all of a sudden, we're gonna throw this immediately. Now, everybody's watching this meeting tonight, and now we're gonna throw these new changes out there and, and tonight, essentially, right after we vote on this, we vote in favor. And I don't think that's fair to those people in our community who, who may need to be educated about it.
All right, I'll take that off.
Thank you. To the authors, um... The, so, so when we look at section D, enforcement and penalties, I do not see who the enforcement authority will be for this, um, ordinance. We do, we don't, we currently do not have it, and the amendment does not offer an enforcement authority either. Have you considered?
Uh, we were assuming that, that inspectional service were gonna continue doing as they were doing it with the previous ordinance. So do you suggest, are you suggesting anybody?
Uh, my, my suggestion would be that we add it as well to the language.
Okay. Uh, by all means, definitely.
Okay, so there's, um, Mr. Clerk, there's, uh, under the enforcement and penalties, section D, a line should read that the enforcement authority for the ordinance will be the Inspection Services Department. Councilor, seeing there's no que, no additional questions or comments, uh, can you please clarify what the current motion on the floor is?
Current motion on the floor for consideration. Council Rod, uh, Vice President Rodriguez's motion to approve. Councilor DePena seconded that motion by way of, um, friendly amendments. Uh, the hourly provisions for removal of all, uh, snow, ice, lush, ice, et cetera, as presented in section, or subsection A, uh, shall read, um, I'm sorry.
Twenty-four hours.
Shall read twenty-four hours throughout, uh, I'm sorry, that's in section B, that had stated six hours previously. And the width provision shall change from forty-two inches to thirty-six inches by agreement. The additional and final provision is the addition of, um, the enforcing authority shall be the Inspection Services Department, and that will be comprised of, uh, subsection, either subsection E or, or subsection four after, um, and the D in the final end. So in short, twenty-four hours for removal of all offending items, thirty, uh, six inches for the width of the walkway to be shoveled or removal of the snow, and the enforcement provisions by the DPW. All other, I'm, I'm sorry, Inspection Services. All other provisions remain the same. A vote yes, will to be approve it. There'll be a thirty-day addendum on this, uh, a thirty-day addendum on this. No waiver.
No waiver.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you. Communications from the mayor, city official, and city attorney, there's none. Appropriations orders and resolutions, there's none. Appropriations and appropriation orders and requests. Document one thirty-three eighteen is an appropriation transfer from free cash to special accounts for police cameras on the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document one fourteen eighteen is an appropriation transfer from free cash to special accounts for problem tree trimming on the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. It's going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Committee reports for the ordinance committee, none. Budget and Finance, none. Housing Committee, none. Personal Committee, none. Public Safety Committee has already been reviewed. Committee of the whole reports, none. Withdrawals, there's none. Old business, there's none. Councilors, I have, um, Chief of Staff. Chief of Staff, Bernal? I have Chief of Staff, Chief of Staff Bernal. Are you here for the Lowell Street document?
Seventy-five, sixteen.
Seventy-five, eighteen? Okay, counselors, is there a motion to take document seventy-five, eighteen out of table matters?
So moved.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing there's none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Chief of Staff Bernal. And Director Vargas.
Eileen Bernal from the mayor's office. Counsel, I had sent an email out today, I don't know if everyone got it, I brought a hard copy, just, may I distribute those, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Good evening, Director.
you, you have three doc, three separate documents. The first document is an email summarizing two other documents that are within the email, I'm sorry, within the package that you just received. The first document is a disclosure form that was filed with the city clerk by Dr. Goran disclosing any financial interest. The second document is a, a further explanation of the assessment of the property, rather, the appraisal of the property, property and determining the value of that property.
Counselors, are there any questions or comments? Are there any motions?
Counsel.
Counselor Lapin.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the table right now, Mr. Clerk?
There is no motion to approve or, or any other motion pending. The last motion before the council was to table, I'll check my notes, though, give me a minute, I don't think. My apologies, there is a motion on the table, and I've yet to record it, my apologies. The motion presented on this document on March sixth was by Councilor Plant with a favorable recommendation on a condition of receipt of a further report from the Ethics Commission as seconded by, and the city attorney as seconded by Council Rodriguez.
Thank you. So, thank you, Mr. President. So, a few things. One is, let me start off by saying this, Mr. President. And I said this from the Budget Committee. This has been a long time coming, and to get a new police station in our city is due. It was overdue after the last police station was built, like, three days after, when it was already overcrowded. That was bad planning at that time, I'm not sure what all the reasons were, but we have needed, and still remain today, a tremendous need. And I want to actually applaud the administration for taking the affirmative steps to go ahead and to, to try to put the pieces together to make this need a reality. And, and it's not easy. I, I honestly do not think that, as my time was on the city council, that I will see a new police station here. I think it's a long, this is a long journey. The journey is in the beginning steps. This is a, one of the first steps is getting the property assembled so that we can have the footprint to then build this. Now, I realize that the question before us is really about a transfer of money so that we can go ahead and do it, make the purchase. And I will tell you, Mr. President, that this sum is quite distasteful for me. To think that we would have to pay that much money for an empty lot, you know, it's not something that gives me great joy, because I wish I was that smart to purchase that property four or five years ago for a minimal amount of money and then be able to accrue the profits. But you know something? That's the way it was. It was speculated at the time, and it looks like that speculation may pay off. And, as unfortunate as that sounds. So the first thing that comes across your mind was, is this a sweetheart deal at all? And that's where the ethics comes in. And so I think that we've received from our, at least from my perspective, the kind of documentation or kind of reviews that are necessary to assure that what is, what this proposal is, is on the up and up. There was a, the Ethics Commission said that there needed to be a disclosure. The disclosure was made to the city clerk, we have that here before us tonight. So as far as whether this is lawful, legal, et cetera, from the very Ethics Commission that had a chance to do it, and the, and the guidance that was given, it's sure, it looks like that box can be checked. The other portion of it is about the money. It's a lot of money. So we, as a city, decided to go ahead and commission an appraisal. Not only did we commission an appraisal for the city, but also the purchaser, I'm sorry, the seller, Mr. Goran, Dr. Goran, always, also did it. In taking a chance, taking a review of the appraisals that was done by the city, they were done from all businesses inside the city of Lawrence. I don't have them here handy. But each of the properties was from the city of Lawrence. Marston Street for one comes to mind, Cumberland Farms comes to mind, I think there were three others, there were five others. So we know that there was apples to apples, and that we were looking at things inside the city. Granted, the other one had a couple of other ones from Drakehead and Andrew, et cetera, but the one that we're basing this on is one that's based on Lawrence properties and Lawrence values. And, and the reality is, is that we have the money now in our free cash account. We could roll the dice on this and push this thing off. And in doing so, we may risk this opportunity. I mean, this is a parcel that's right in the middle of our city. It's not on the outskirts. People say to me all the time, because I represent where the showcase cinemas are, put it on the showcase cinema, make it over there. Well, well, if we put it on the outskirts of the city, it's going to take a while for a police officer to get from point A to point B, potentially. You want to have it centralized so that they're able to get to the various points quickly and efficiently. This is an area right here in the middle of the city that's, that's optimal. The price is crazy, but we have the money. And I do think that because all the, the checkboxes are there, there, we should go for it. My last point is this. I don't want, I, I am not disillusioned by the, by the process, I'm not disillusioned by the timetable. I mentioned earlier, I'm probably not going to see it happen. I know we have talked about bond bills, et cetera, and the, and the legislature, and that's great. That means we have people who are enthusiastic about this process. But it's not that simple, and it's going to take a while, and it's going to take, and it's going to take a lot of creative ways to try to get the money into the city, and it's not going to be one silver bullet that's going to do it. So we may at some point have to bond money, we may be able to do some matchings with the state, we may be able to find some other monies as well through, through free cash, who knows, right? But, but this is not going to happen today and tomorrow, unfortunately, because I know all of us, I can, I think I can say this with great clarity and confidence, we all want this thing to be built yesterday. And I just, you know, as much as we want that to happen, it's, I don't believe it's going to happen that quickly. So let's do it incrementally if we have to, let's take the steps that are needed. It's not the perfect system because of the amount of money, but it is what it is, we can't control that. We have independent folks who provide appraisals for us. They've documented the numbers, they've documented that stuff, and my recommendation is that we support that tonight.
Counselor Peña.
Thank you, Council President. So, thank you, Mr. Vargas, for sort of giving us a documentation. Two of the things that we were, three of the things we were asking for was, you know, questions around the Ethics Commission, you know, that was provided. And then there were, you know, questions about the assessed value and the, the appraised value. You know, it's unfortunate that the, you know, we asked for the assessor to be here, and we asked for a report, some, some type of information, I think it was Councilor Plant that asked for it. It's unfortunate that that wasn't able to be provided. But with the appraised value, you know, one of the questions that I have is, in the letter, he kind of states, he gives this number, eight hundred and sixteen thousand. Now, why is that different than his previous sort of, or the, the appraised value of seven hundred something thousand?
You referring to?
So, so, so within, so within this memo, and I think.
Yeah, yeah, yes, I can answer that question.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so that, that number was produced based on what he identified as the highest and best, the highest and best use as allowed by existing ordinances, which would be residential. So if, if he were to appraise this property for the final use of being residential, that would be, there would be a higher valuation, someone would be paying more if they knew that they could do residential development on that parcel.
This is the, the same appraisal, appraisal company that submitted the original?
The appraisal on our behalf, correct.
And that was for how much?
Seven hundred thousand.
So, so why is there a difference between seven hundred and eight hundred and sixteen thousand?
Because the, the identified use is not, is not residential development. It's, it's a, it's a commercial parking lot for the use of, of supporting the police station.
Okay, so what he's saying is, is that if, because I know in some part, they, they mentioned special, that special permitting would be required, that they don't currently have. So he's saying that if they were to achieve that, then the value of that property would go up?
If, if you were to receive certain, certain relief from our dimensional requirements, from zoning, from planning board, the property would be worth more. For example, if you have, if you own a five thousand square foot lot, it would be worth something if it didn't go through the zoning process. If it goes through the zoning process, automatically the next day, it's worth, you know, thirty percent or fifty percent, but whatever. It's worth more if, if there is a permitted use associated with it.
And, and I think the questions before were around why regarding the appraised value of seven hundred, not necessarily, like, so the reasoning for that, seeing that there were, you know, that it wasn't necessarily apples to apples, that there were like, sort of different, some of the, the companies that were, were chosen, you know, some of them from Drakeheads, some of them from Tewksbury. So I think the questions were around that. You know, but honestly, I, I don't want to be the only one sort of holding this up. I, I don't know if there, those were my concern two weeks ago. They're, my, my questions around the assessed value, why there'd be such a huge difference between the assessed value and the appraised value, I'm still not quite clear on that. Because I, I know that when you're buying a property, you know, a residential property, there is a difference, you know, and that difference, maybe it's a hundred thousand, seventy-five thousand. But with, with this, you know, we're looking at almost a three hundred percent difference. And I thought that it would be, you know, before we voted on it, you know, I thought that it was important for us to know why the city assessor sort of made that determination of the assessed value, and also for us to clearly understand how the appraisal came up with the seven hundred thousand. I think this memo is great in the, sort of explaining why you could appraise it for eight hundred and sixteen thousand, but it doesn't talk at all about sort of the original appraised value that, that he gave.
Well, the, the, the original document does that for us. And, and, you know, the, the document that he produced really has all properties from Lawrence. The three twenty-two South Broadway where Cumberland Farms currently is, was a vacant lot for a long time, where Nassau Ford once was, that property sold for one point three million dollars. So there, there's a point of reference and an indication that property in Lawrence, if the use is identified and there's value in that use, could sell for that much and even more. So, so there, there is precedent for that valuation based on the report. So all of, so forty-nine Jamaica Street, three twenty-two South Broadway, zero Marston Street, one Marston Street, eighty Manchester Street, all those properties are in Lawrence, and they, they represent a higher valuation than the one that's being presented to you here today. The, the one other property I wanted to mention that was not highlighted, and it, and I'm, you know, not sure why it wasn't, but maybe it was because of the date when it was sold, was a property over on Merrimack Street. You may all be familiar with it, it's, it's to the, the east of the train station, the McGovern parking garage. It's a big vacant lot with a bunch of dirt on it. That property in two thousand thirteen sold for eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. That property right now is assessed at, is assessed at a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So I, I think, I think that the, the, the person that bought that property saw value in the market that he was willing to pay well, well above the assessed, the assessed value. Because that, that end user, that person had a, had a use in mind, and though he's not experiencing it at this point, when he bought in two thousand and thirteen, he bought it with a use in mind, and he valued it at eight hundred and sixty-five thousand because of that future use.
So, so can, can you explain the sort of the process? So once this is, so say, city council votes favorably on this, what, what then happens?
I, I think it's, it's an appropriation. So we, we'd be, you'd vote to allow us to, you'd give us, you'd give us the money to be able to purchase the property, you'd make the money available for us to go out and purchase property.
So, so for that, for that, so once the, the city decides to purchase the property, does it come back to the city council at all?
No.
No, okay. Well, you know, I'll, I'll say that, you know, while I have some sort of concerns, you know, I understand that there is a need for us to start sort of thinking about expanding the police station. And I know that that's not going to happen, you know, anytime soon. I hope that it is, you know, within the next five years, not necessarily the next twenty years. And I will sort of, you know, put the trust on the administration that, you know, the due diligence was done. I still, even though I will vote favorably on this, I, I think that, and perhaps, you know, presenting this sort of a different, a different process for it, but we, we need to sort of understand how the city assessor came to assess this property. And the report that he gave two weeks ago, I don't think did that, you know, it was a one-page report, it was very, you know, I, I thought that more could be added to, so to let us know and let the public understand on that process. But I think, you know, the question at hand is six hundred and fifty thousand, which sounds like an incredible amount, you know, sort of right to, to, to buy this property up so you guys can continue sort of your plan to building a police station, if that's the question at hand that I would vote favorably for it.
Counselor De La Cruz.
I would like to say that now that we had the opportunity to have the lines so close to the first responder, which are the fire department and the police department, I think I would like to, my dear counselors, to approve this, because I have worked around the building inside, the police department building. And let me tell you, it, it's not a place that I would like to go and work. It is insane that any chief, any, if you go to me with anybody over there, you don't have a private location to speak to. Or if you are outside, you had to be, you had to be online outside. For me, that's a shame, because not everybody that goes to the police department is a criminal. But even if you go for the traffic or for whatever, you had to be making the line outside. Then, I think we have been waiting for too long, having the police department and the fire department next to each other, and having the parking space or whatever. Even, I would like to say that I, I would like the glass company to sell that too, because that way we could use the whole block just for the first responder. Then, I would vote in favor of this, and I, I wouldn't like to see the opportunity, losing the opportunity of buying this land. It's that a little expensive, but in comparison to all the properties in the community, the price is, is not that high, if we compare. Then, I wouldn't like to see this opportunity not being, taking the, I mean, in other words, not having the opportunity to buy the land at this moment. I understand. I understand that I might, I don't like the situation where the value might be considered too much, but if, it is a great opportunity to buy it now, because we've been waiting, I've been in this city for twenty years, and that building, that building is, is one of the worst buildings in this city that I have walked inside.
Thank you, Councilor De La Cruz, Councilor Abdi.
Thank you, Mr. President. I speak this evening in favor of this investment. You know, I, in nineteen ninety-nine, I sat on Mayor Dowling's transition and the master plan, not the transition, but there was a master planning process, and I remember at that time, the prevailing thought was, let's renovate ninety Lowell Street. Way back then, and probably long before that, the police and fire department on Lowell Street were an abomination. And since that time, you know, the renovation of those two, I, I think there's been some new paint, there's been some touch-ups, but we've all toured it, we've all seen it, and over the last couple of decades, you know, in, in two thousand and seven, I sat on this council, and, and this one individual wanted this, wanted this city to make an investment and buy the old cement plant on Merrimack Street. I thought that'd be a great location for a public safety center and a DPW, but we didn't have the money, right? And we didn't have the money in nineteen ninety-nine to renovate to the extent that we should have, we didn't have the money in two thousand and seven to make an investment where I thought would be going, I stood alone on that, by the way, because the prevailing thought at that time was Pemberton Park. The administration of that time thought Pemberton Park, not the park itself, but the parking lot off to the side, part of that vast parking lot, would have made a great location for public safety, and maybe it would have. I do know it's underwater a lot whenever the Merrimack, whenever the Merrimack River comes up, so, but I know in the business I'm in, you can engineer around those things at a cost, but you know, those were opportunities lost, as was the registry of deeds on Common Street. This city should have made the investment, then state law requires DCAM, who owned it, to survey, and the city would have been the first question. So someone said no, when the registry of deeds is available, and Northern Essex was the beneficiary, and that's great for the city of Lawrence today, but we got lucky. Bishops lost opportunity. That would have been a great, because you know, we have a lot of capital needs, this city does, and we don't often have money. Frankly, we don't have money now, but we do have some free cash. One day, I think the post office will be available, not saying that it's rumored, but it's, you know, one, it's a very big parcel of land, and I hope whoever that council is, I won't be here, but hopefully that council and mayor will be bullish and aggressive about that parcel. So I, as one individual tonight, I think we're a long ways from a new fire and police department. I think there's a lot of work to be done, a lot of money to be spent, but I look at this more tonight as just an investment. I, I, I'm willing to put my, my chips forward, and frankly, the two calls I got were against how I'm gonna vote tonight, but hopefully they'll understand, those two individuals that reach out to me, that I see this as an investment and opportunity. Do I like the price? No, but shame on the city in two thousand and eleven, when it had begun to turn the corner, but not considering it at that time, because that is right in the middle, for us district councils, is right in the middle of all of our districts. For that large councils, you know, it's dead center in the middle of the city, and for all the firehouses we've closed from time to time, either on Prospect Hill or Tower Hill, you know, Lowell Street shoots up to Tower Hill, and it's an easy shot up to Prospect Hill. It makes sense on so many levels, and so I, for one, you know, there's some risk involved because the market is volatile, and I'm not certain that a public safety center will be built anytime soon, but I believe that it's an investment by the city, just as Dr. Gorn made in two thousand and eleven, we don't know where the market's going, but we put it down today, and we give this administration, or future administrations, or future councils, the opportunity, when we do have the money and the credit, and any other partners that may be partnering with us down the road, the opportunity to say, you know what, let's build it on that Lowell Street property next door to the fire and police department. And so with that, I will be supporting this this evening, and I will do so knowing that it will probably sit empty for a couple of years, but I am, again, bullish, and I am hopeful that this, this administration or the next will be able to get it done, because our public, our public safety officers, both police and fire, deserve, and I know we're all in agreement on this, do not deserve their current working conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor De Peña.
Thank you, Mr. President. I support buy the property tonight for one reason. Twenty-four years ago, Administration Kennedy understand here, police department need to spend, follow Administration Dowling, Administration now, police department need to spend, new facility. Eight years ago, no, eight years, Administration my servant understand, police department need to spend a new facility. Administration Lantigua, four year, not doing nothing, not take action. Administration Rivera, four years ago, understand, the city need new facility, maybe not take action. Now, this Administration take action, I understand, the property is very expensive. When you selling any property in Lawrence, if you selling for the value the city have, it's ridiculous price. Right now, I pay taxes to the city for one property, the city have my property values two hundred, two, two hundred sixty, but I have to offer for half million dollars. If the city don't doing nothing now, don't take action, in the future, maybe need pay more. The city have two opportunity in the past. Many years ago, seven eleven, take it one, when you take it, when you first run, take another one opportunity. Now is the last opportunity the city have for spend a new facility of safety department. Not doing nothing, not take action now, never again. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor De Peña, Councilor Leb.
Thank you, Council President. Okay, I'm gonna take it as like an investment, like any, any way that we do an investment in tomorrow, I know that the price or any land or any property change because the price is going up and down, but I really, really, I disagree with the price or the appraisal, you know, for this amount of money. I think so is too much money to pay for this empty lot. With the amount of money that we have to pay for this empty lot, and also I know that we've been waiting for so long to build a building or a new police department in the city of Lawrence, you know, it's a particular place for we to build the building in the center of the city that is close to, like, everybody in the city is more easy to get to over there, but I disagree, like I said before, with the appraisal, so I don't think so that we have to pay for that amount of money, but I'm gonna take it as an investment. So the city need a lot, we need the new police department to build the new building, I know that we have the money, and also there are some money for the construction. I don't know when construction is gonna start. The only thing that I feel like a little, it's like, nothing is coming back to us as a city council, that I, we would like to know a little bit more, or we, at least, we should be on the loop of everything that is happening after we agree and say, go ahead and buy the lots. That's practically one of my concern, but I'm gonna trust, I'm gonna trust, you know, in our authority, that this thing is gonna be for the best of the city of Lawrence, and also for the community. I'm gonna, I'm gonna favor tonight this.
Thank you, councillor. Okay, councillors, all those in favor, please, Councilor Rodriguez.
I just wanna, I have a few questions. So we tried to acquire the property in two thousand and eleven, right?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
When was the last time that we tried to acquire the property?
As, as far as I'm aware, I don't, I don't suspect that the city ever actively tried to pursue the, the purchase of this property until now, from what I understand. I mean, some, some of you guys have been here longer than I have, some of the other councillors, but based on my recollection or my information gathering, the city has not taken a position of any sort to purchase this property prior to this effort.
So according to public record, the property have the stage one done, stage one cleaning done, right?
Yes, so we, we, we did a brownfield assessment to, back a few years ago, to support, so we, we received funding from the EPA to, to provide, to provide the due diligence for the purposes of, of potential redevelopment, and we've done it with a lot of different properties. We, we did it in Stoner, over on, on Market Street, we did, we've done it at a few different places. This was one of the locations that we spent EPA money to do assessment work for the purpose of some future development, though it was not identified at that moment, at that time, we committed to providing support to a business owner in the city, like we do with others.
So before any construction happen, a stage two need to, need to happen, right?
Excuse me?
Before any construction is in place, stage two must happen, correct?
I don't believe it has to, because we already did a phase two, so we have all that documentation in city records that...
There is any contamination there, right?
Excuse me?
There is any contamination there?
There, there is no, there is no substantive contamination. There may be some petroleum, things like that, but all that stuff is easily managed.
I just wanted to put that on the record. I have seen the records, thank you for just putting that up, and I'm voting in favor of this tonight.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Councillors, we have Director from the Council on Aging before, he in the, in the audience as well, she has a document that is currently in the ordinance committee, but because the ordinance committee wasn't able to meet, and there's some time sensitivity, I wish to request a motion to...
Motion to take out of the ordinance committee?
We don't know which document, councillor.
Oh, documents.
What, what is the document number?
The city attorney wrote it here.
Ninety-one eighteen. Document nine, councillors, is there a motion to suspend Rule eleven and take document ninety-one eighteen out of committee?
Yes, so move.
Second.
Councilor Rodriguez has made the motion, it's been second by Councilor De Peña.
Discussion, what's the name of the, what's the name of the document?
Ninety-one?
No, it's not on your agenda, it's in the ordinance committee, so we're suspending the rule to pull it out of the ordinance committee.
What is it?
Is, if you bear with me one second, the document is...
The ordinance proposition.
The proposed community health specialist, it's an ordinance position.
I'm passing documents around that explains what we're asking.
Carol.
Mr. President, and if it could also be explained sort of like what, what the urgency is for us passing it today?
Correct. So if we, if we are able to at least entertain a motion to engage in a discussion, that will be helpful. So we do have a motion on the floor, sorry, it's been second, discussion, councillor Leb.
That's the question.
Yeah.
What's the, what's the issue?
Okay, Director Vales.
So the city of Lawrence was, through AARP, was named an age-friendly community, and through being named an age-friendly community, we applied for a grant through Tufts Foundation. The Tufts Foundation has given us a six-month pilot funding through the Mayor's Health Task Force in Greater Lawrence Groundworks. So the three of us are partners, and what happened is, they're giving us six months to put somebody to start the data collecting part of it, and they gave it to us in February, we put this on the agenda, it was supposed to be today, we have to have somebody in place before May or June, like the beginning of June, so I, I asked the city council president if we could bring this up, because by the time you approve it, and then it gets posted, we interview, it really like shortens the time, and as we write our next proposal, which is due on the twenty-ninth of March, we need to say that we've done some steps, and one of the steps is going before city council and on and seeing the position and posting.
So through you, so the ultimate motion here is to order a public hearing?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, seeing there's no further questions or comments, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Councillors, is there a motion to order a public hearing?
Motion to order a public hearing.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second, any discussions, seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillors, we have, we also have here members of the Massachusetts AFL-CIO to discuss the wage theft ordinance. Is there a motion on the floor to take document one twenty-four seventeen out of table matters?
So move.
Motion has been made and properly second, any discussion, seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Mr. Clerk, what is the current status on the, on this particular document?
The item was introduced to the council on March twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen, ordered to a public hearing on July eleventh of two thousand and seventeen. The public hearing was opened on August seventeenth, and in the middle of the public hearing, as it remains open, was tabled.
Okay, so public hearing is now open, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard?
So good evening, Mr. President, member of the council, Francisco Brea, for the record, in eighty-five Colonial Road. Here, here today before you, councillors, on behalf of the wage theft resolution, which is, we've been trying to bring this to this council for a long, long time, but always something happens, and the last, the last thing that's happened was the election, and we was waiting until everybody taking place and be squared in, and so that we can address to you. So thank you for the opportunity, but on this resolution, I believe that they've been trying to go across to the state, cities and towns, it's a resolution that actually protect the workers, and I have somebody with me, he come from, from Boston, he's also from United Labor Community, and he will explain to you much better than me, and also, if you have any question, please direct it to, to him, but my job here today is to make sure that you understand that this is a good thing for our community, due to fact that the community, like Lawrence, which is a great, great percentage of the community is from Latin America, and very, very vulnerable, so to be, let's say, checked by contractors and different people from outside. Again, we will try to protect the workers here, and with your permission, Mr. President, member of the council, I'd like maybe Bob Bauer to come up to the podium and explain to you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Francisco. My name's Bob Bauer, I'm the assistant to the president of the Massachusetts AFL-CIO in Malden, and I also work with Community Labor United, which is coalition of community and labor groups working together to improve the lives of workers across the Commonwealth. And, Mr. President, and the distinguished members of this council, I first want to just say thank you for your courage for taking up this important issue. Seven hundred million dollars a year has been, being stolen from workers here in Massachusetts, every single year, and if there was two million dollars a day being stolen from the banks in this Commonwealth, there'd be police on every single bank trying to protect these banks, but workers don't have that protection, workers are having their wages stolen every single day. We were fortunate to be able to pass wage theft ordinances so far in nine other communities, Boston, Chelsea, Cambridge, Medford, Far River, North Hampton, Worcester, Somerville, and in Quincy. We're in the process right now, next week they'll be taking it up in Lynn, Malden's been taking it up, Brockton, New Bedford, and Springfield, and tonight, with your help, we'd be able to get the tenth city passed here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to protect these workers. One of the things that you'll be doing tonight is to be telling the residents of this city that you care about workers, and you want to make sure that when workers go to work, that they get paid for the wages that they earn, and that the taxpayers' dollars are being protected, making sure that responsible employers, if they do do a contract with the city or town that has wage theft ordinances, that they have to make, make a motion saying that they have not stolen wages, have not been... they have not stolen wages, have not been convicted of wage theft in the Commonwealth. It doesn't say they can't apply for a contract with the city or town, it just says if they do have wage theft violations, they have to be bonded so that those workers are guaranteed that they're going to be paid. We have 130 legislators up at the State House in Massachusetts who have signed on to this wage theft bill that we have. It just moved out of Labor and Workforce Development. It'll be in Ways and Means, it's in Ways and Means this week. We're hoping that bill is going to pass up at the State House and send a message to the folks of Massachusetts that workers deserve to be paid for the work that they do. I would just again commend you for your leadership and for taking up this wage theft ordinance tonight. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now officially closed. Councillors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion?
Discussions.
Discussion, councillor La Plante?
Is this a resolution or an ordinance?
An ordinance.
Okay, so we kept saying the word resolution, so this is actually a new law that we're looking to create. I know that the speaker before was talking in general about the big picture and the Commonwealth. I'd like to know a little more specifically about my city, our city. Do we know what's going on in our city? Is there a problem that we're seeing here in the city of Lawrence where there's a wage theft issue going on?
Yeah, so you can see...
Can you shed some light on it, please?
The Attorney General has just, not in your city, but right down the street in Lowell, just had recovered $1.2 million in wage theft this year. If you go onto the Attorney General's website on the wage theft, you can go by city and town of every single wage theft complaint that has been filed by city, and you'll see that Lawrence has had several wage theft complaints within the city. What the legislation does, like I said, you mentioned statewide, it gives the Attorney General more tools. What it does here, it just deters some of these unscrupulous businesses from trying to apply for contracts with municipalities, and make sure that the good businesses in these communities have the access to get these jobs.
And because we're just really listening to this for the first time, it's been a while, some of our members here weren't even part of the city council when this public hearing opened back last year, so maybe for their benefit as well as for mine, through you, Mr. President, can you just give me a very simple case study of a municipality where you see that happen, and how that law and the six communities, I think you said that currently have...
Nine.
Nine, I'm sorry. Nine communities currently have this, how that's resolving that particular issue? Just so I can have a better understanding.
Well, in Chelsea, and I apologize, the Chelsea City Council President wanted to be here tonight. He had an emergency. He was going to be here. I think some councillors may have talked to him before on how it's working in Chelsea. And also, the Chelsea Collaborative, which represents a lot of the Latino community in Chelsea, was part of the wage theft ordinance in Chelsea. What they've done is they've educated and made sure not only the contractors, but mostly the businesses in the community know more about wage theft. In Boston, what they did was they put together an advisory committee for the wage theft ordinance that they did. They started small with just a wage theft ordinance to make sure that people would be aware of what was going on, but secondly, they expanded on it, where now they put together a living wage commission and some other stuff on there too.
Let me interrupt the speaker. I just want to understand, give me an example of a situation, maybe it's a day worker, whatever, day labor, whatever it is. Tell me something that I can firmly understand the issue where someone is having wage theft, and that this is going to correct that, and then how this law is going to be applying to the municipality who's looking at that particular agency, that business, that contractor, and then looking at that particular bid for whatever the job is. That's what I want to hear. Can you paint that picture?
Right. There's a lot of cases, we can show you cases from different contractors, like especially, there's a lot with the construction industry, where you have a general contractor, and then they hire a subcontractor, whose side is another subcontractor who hires 10 people as independent contractors, and they're not being paid. And the person up at the top should be held responsible for it, but they're not being held responsible for it. So, it's vicarious liability that they should know, or should have known that these people that they've hired, you know, weren't being paid the wages that they should. And a lot of times, it's not only the bottom guy, contractor, he says that this guy didn't pay him, and it's all about finger pointing. I mean, I can give you all kinds of case studies and stuff like that. There was a lot of stuff that we had given out before on it. It's all on our website, on the Community Labor United's website on it. There's been studies from the National Employment Law Project. This is an epidemic across the country. If you put wage theft in your Google search, every day you'll get 10 or 15 articles about wage theft that's happening in the communities.
Thank you for coming. I have one question, real quick question, and then one very quick comment. What is the impact on our purchasing agent with this new law? What extra requirements are going to be placed on that person on top of their duties that they currently have?
I think it's just, I mean, I don't know the exact, specific, complete language what has been changed, but I know that some languages were stronger than others in different wage theft ordinances. Some added the TIFs to them, some added city licenses and stuff like that. The one that comes to mind is mostly just, you know, the contractor that does, if you guys put out an RFP, and if the contractor says that he didn't have any wage theft violations, then there's no problem. If he says that he had, he's been convicted of wage theft over the last three years, then he can still apply for the contract, but he has to be bonded to make sure that those workers are paid.
Thank you. And my last comment, councillors, 1912, that should have ring a bell with all of us. That was the Bread and Roses strike back 106 years ago, and there's a lot of reasons why that strike took place. It's a very complex issue. We try to simplify it every year, but there's an underbelly, or there's a reason for why the folks in our mills back then, in our history, decided that they were going to essentially revolt, and part of that was because of wages that they weren't being paid. And so, our city has a track record, a history that deals with it. We need to honor that. That's a true part of our history. We need to honor that portion of it. And I think that what this sounds to me, it sounds almost innocuous, it's like no harm being done to it. So, I ask a lot of tough questions, because I really want to understand what this is about, and so I'm not sure why I wouldn't be able to support that. So, I thank you for your patience, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councillor de la Cruz?
Yes, I have one more question. Will this, would you benefit the people in agencies?
Excuse me?
Would this solution or ordinance will benefit the people working by agencies? You know, that they go to work?
Temporary agencies and places like that? Yes. I mean, what this really does, we're trying to do a three-prong approach. One of the approaches that we've been trying to do is, one, is get ordinances passed across the Commonwealth so that strengthens our opportunity to pass legislation to give the Attorney General more powers. Right now, she can only, she can't take things to court as fast as she'd like to be able to take to court, and she can't do what they call stop work orders. And the legislation that we have up at the State House is what they have, stop work orders. It's like the Department of Industrial Accidents right now. If you don't pay workers comp on a job, they can stop that job until you pay workers comp. What they want to do with this is if you're not paying wages, the Attorney General can file a stop work order, but what we did to protect the businesses community was to make sure that the good businesses, if somebody didn't know about it, that they have time to fix it and that they have to be notified. So, what we're trying to do with these wage theft ordinances across the state is to show that the state, I mean, that the municipalities do not want to, they want to protect workers and make sure that the workers in their cities and towns are protected, and in turn, it'll help us pass this legislation up at the State House.
Have you been getting the support of our state rep and our senator?
We have 135 state reps on there. I don't think one, Matthias was on board at the time when she first got elected. I don't think, I think the bill had already been moved out of committee, and I'm sure she's in favor of it, but I'm not sure that she had signed on to it when she first got elected. I think Frank Moran was on it. Pablo Italian has been a big supporter of it as well.
So, through you, councillor President, when we talk about city contract, are we including every contract that we have in the city of Lawrence, or there is limited contracts? Because I don't see anything related to snow and ice.
I think, I'm not sure exactly how it's written up, whether it's contracts just for construction, or whether, probably the whole contract, whether, anything that goes off for an RFP.
Okay. So, those type of contract doesn't go to RFP?
So, if it's not going through an RFP process, it will not be?
It will not apply. No, I just wanted to make sure that that's up there, because I didn't see anything related to that. I don't have any more questions. Thank you for putting this together.
You know, in the city of Chelsea, the city councillors who work there were very proud to be able to support this because they knew that a lot of the people that are in their community had wages stolen from them in the past, and they wanted to make sure that they showed their constituents that, you know, we stand behind you, we want to make sure when you go to work, you have a single mother, you're a parent trying to make ends meet, if I go to work, I want to be able to get paid for the days I work. That's all we're looking for, just a fair day's pay, you know, if you go to work and do that. People are being, wages are being stolen from overtime, making them work through lunch breaks, and, you know, there's a lot of different ways that wage theft is being done. Thank you.
Councillor Payano?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a statement to say, but before that, just a question for the council president. You know, councillor Giovanni, councillor Rodriguez asked regarding the, sort of, the contracts with snow removal. Would they fall into this?
No, because they do not have to RFP for the city.
So, they don't bid for it as well?
Not in the RFP process. So, it's a different process for snow removal.
Okay.
I am working in a different document to have something similar for anyone that contracts for snow removal.
Okay, so this is only if the bid is through the RFP process?
So, through our purchasing agent, yeah.
Okay, so this is only if it's through the purchasing agent? Okay, I understand. Thank you. I definitely think, I think this sounds like a great bill. I think that this is definitely an issue that happens, you know, all throughout, not just the city, but across the state. I would love to see, I think, you know, any contract with the city should follow through this, so, you know, if the council president wanted to make that change, I definitely would be extremely supportive of that. I think the only sort of, not a question, sort of, issue that I think might come up is that there are other ordinances that we have in the books that are sort of like great rules that protect workers, but it all depends on whether they're being enforced or not. And sometimes that enforcement, you know, can come from many different places, but it could come a time that two, three years from now, you have different people there, and they completely forget that that's even in the books. I like what you, you know, said, that it's also a way that the Attorney General can use to, you know, sort of, control the issue, but I think that, you know, it's important that an outside, you know, like, you guys or the community is more engaged to ensure that we continue to be watchful, because if the rule is there but no enforcement is being done, then it's all for naught. But I want to thank you for sort of, for bringing this up and offering a potential solution for the people that are being affected by this.
Through councillor President. Any councillor that has not spoken yet? Councillor Rodriguez?
Yes, I just wanted to recognize Francisco Brea for helping us understand the bill and calling us all the time in terms of, you know, looking forward to, for the city council to approve this bill. We've been in communication probably for quite a bit now, and thank you for being persistent with us and providing that information and sending it to us before we get to this point. Thank you.
Mr. Brea?
One thing that I want to just share with you. Back to the war with Iraq, there was a lot of Latinos who was contracted to do some work in some areas, just to, let's say, to do some, I mean, some kind of work that got to do with the Iraq war, and guess what? Those people never get paid. And I do remember when they actually was looking for a state representative to complain it, and honestly, not to mention any, but nothing happens, and that's what we try to do here. Things like that doesn't happen anymore, especially a community like us. And this is not just protecting Latin American people, it protects every worker, regardless who's they are. See, everybody's involved. As long as workers, we want to make sure that they be protected and get, you know, treated as a human beings. And I thank you very much for your attention, and I just hope that you supported this resolution.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brea. I am glad that, you know, we've worked on this for a couple of months now, multiple meetings and phone calls and back and forth, and I am very excited to see this come to fruition tonight. Councillors, I encourage all of you to vote in support of this measure, and let's make, you know, the 10th wage theft ordinance city in the Commonwealth tonight. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations, and thank you for the support.
He was here seven o'clock tonight. I promised it, it would be ours, and I said, "Hey, how about, I don't know, I do not know if I have a job to work."
That was not his fault. Okay, thank you very much. Councillors, are there any, if you wish to stay, you can, that's not a problem. Councillors, are there any additional table matters that you wish to take off the table at this point? Seeing there's none, moving on to new business. We have Document 9418, it's a transfer vendor license, 68 Willow Street, going to the ordinance committee. Document 9518, Groundwork Lawrence requesting the use of the ferro site for a Greenway road race on August 12, 2018, from 7:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., going to the ordinance committee. Document 9618, Groundwork Lawrence requesting the use of the Campania Common for a farmer's market from July 11th to October 24th, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. It's going to the ordinance committee. Members of the ordinance committee, please make sure that you ask on which date, which day of the week. I know usually they've done it on Wednesdays or Saturdays. This one doesn't specify at this time. Document 9518, Groundwork Lawrence requesting the use of the Sullivan Park for a farmer's market from July 7th to July 27th, 2018, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m., going to the ordinance committee. Document 9818, Groundwork Lawrence request to begin at Manchester Street Park for Spigot River Cleanup on September 15, 2018, from 8 a.m. to 1 p.m., going to the ordinance committee. Document 9918, Groundwork Lawrence requesting the use of the Campania Common for Earth Day, Comcast Care Day on April 21st, 2018, from 8 a.m. to 1 p.m., going to the ordinance committee. Document 118, No Parking Corner of Prospect and Hable Street by councillor Levy is going to the ordinance committee. Document 10118, No Parking Corner of Prospect on Fulton Street by councillor Levy is going to the ordinance committee. Document 10218, City of Lawrence Mayor's Health Task Force requests to use the O'Connell South Common for Salsa Festival on Saturday, June 2nd, 2018, from 10 a.m. to 3 p.m., going to the ordinance committee. Document 10318, City of Lawrence Mayor's Health Task Force requests to use the Campania Common for Lawrence Seclobia on Sunday, August 5th and September 9th, 2018, from 3 to 7 p.m., is going to the ordinance committee. Document 10418, it's 2017 Annual Report from City Physician Request by councillor Payano is going... To the... No, because this is not a budgetary matter. It is more public safety.
So, I would say?
It's Public Safety Committee. Correct?
Yes.
Document 10518, 2017 Annual Report from the Lawrence Police Fire Department, requested by councillor Payano, is going to the Public Safety Committee. Document 10618, Handicap Parking, 19 Cedar Street, Fernando Gualle is going to the ordinance committee. Document 10718, El Pez Dorado Restaurant and Grill, two one-hour parking on Exeter Street and two one-hour parking on Oxford Street by councillor President Rodriguez is going to the ordinance committee. Document 10818, Review of Missions Square Parking, Eastman Agreement with Jackson Street Housing Associates, LTD, councillor Vice President Rodriguez is going to the housing committee. Document 10918, Handicap Parking, 45 Bigelow Street, councillor Abdo is going to the ordinance committee. Document 11018, Hable Street, one way between Prospect Street and Hable Street by councillor Levy is going to the ordinance committee. Document 11118, Fulton Street, one way between Prospect and Hable Street by councillor Levy is going to the ordinance committee. is going to the ordinance committee. Document 11218, Request to Pay Prior Fiscal Year Invoice, Macca Corporation, Incorporated, on the amount of $5,225.05 by Roy Vask, our acting police chief, is going to the Budget and Finance Committee. Mr. Chair from the Personnel Committee, when will be your next meeting?
The president that day is unknown, so it's going to be a memory life.
Okay, Mr. Chair from the Budget and Finance Committee. Mr. Chair from Public Safety Housing Committee.
We have a meeting already scheduled for Tuesday, March 27.
Mr. Chair from Budget, from Public Safety Committee.
I want to ask my colleagues if April 9th at 7 p.m. works.
What date is that?
It's a Monday.
So you said Public Safety Committee, right?
Public Safety.
You do the term Monday?
Yeah, yes, I can.
That's the second.
That's April 16.
April 16.
April 16.
It's Patriot's Day. Is that Patriot's Day?
It's the Patriot's Day.
It's a holiday.
It's a holiday. Follow, next.
And-
I have the 7th.
23rd?
23rd.
I couldn't do 23rd.
In the meantime-
Ordinance on the 29th.
Ordinance will be on the 29th.
Come on, safety guy.
It's the 10th of a council meeting?
So the 10th, we have a city council meeting on the 24th. So we go ahead, potentially do-
17.
17th works for me.
April 17th?
Yes.
Is that a Tuesday?
Sorry, it's Tuesday.
Mm-hmm, Tuesday.
What did I say?
17?
Say the 10th and 23rd. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I made a mistake. I may, I said city council on the 24th. It's the 17th. So the 17th, we're going to be here already.
So April 10th, does that work for folks?
April 10th, okay. April 10th. Okay, so let's recap. Personnel, there's no meeting scheduled. Budget and Finance, Wednesday, March 28th, that's my sister's birthday. Housing, March 27th. Public Safety, April 10th. Ordinance, March 29th. So far, all at 7 p.m. Counselors, is there a motion to adjourn? Who made the motion? Everybody's second.
I made the motion.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, and it's been properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.